Welcome, everybody, to the December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. The commission now utilizes speaker request forms. If you'd like to speak on any item, please complete a speaker request form located at the bookshelf in the back of the chambers and return it to Commission Manager Holly Hennies located at the lower right side of the dais. We'll call the meeting to order, and I will do a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we have on our agenda the recognition of outgoing commissioners. Who's gonna do?
Guaranteed to work.
Thank you, Holly. Well, it's my privilege to be able to extend our thanks on behalf of Pennington County to Lloyd La Croix, who has served in a commissioner position for the last eight years. And I think you've represented your constituents extremely well, and I think they're appreciative of what you've done for them. And on behalf of the county employees, I've heard from a few of them that are disappointed that you're not going to be here, but I know that you've taken a lot of consideration and concern over employees, too. On behalf of the commission and the county, I'd like to give you a couple of items as gifts. We know that you and Pam, Pam doing a little traveling, and so these may come in handy. Here's your personalized luggage thing.
Oh, wow. Thanks.
And there's a custom-made passport holder for you.
Oh, wow.
And so, we just want to thank you, Lloyd. You've done a great job. Appreciate you as being chair, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I'd just like to take the moment to not only thank all the commissioners, the past and the present, past sheriffs and past department heads and so forth. You know, this has been a great experience in my life, and it's actually saved my life, to be honest. You know, my first contact with the county was probably when I was thirteen, fourteen years old, and my mentor, Dee Glasgow, helped me when I was in my twenties, and then working at Detox for nine years helped me grow to be around positive people. And so I see what the county does. They see our citizens as human beings and what they can do for them and sees the potential in them. And quite frankly, you know, the county has saved my life, and I'm really appreciative of that. I would not be where I am today if it wasn't for the county. Wish my dad was here. You know, when I was a young man, I promised, you know, I bet him a twelve-pack of beer I'd be dead by the time I was eighteen, so he'd be really proud of me right now. So I really appreciate all you guys do. Thank you.
Mr. Haddock, you're up.
Can I limit you to three sentences?
I had to write this, I don't mess it up. Okay. Travis Lassiter, District Four Commissioner, serving four years as a public servant to Pennington County and our community. We'd like to thank you also for your twenty-one years of service to our country in the military today. With your leadership and commitment and skills, we are grateful and blessed to have you not only as a commissioner, as only as a commissioner in our Pennington County, but for your service as the Director of Black Hills Pregnant Center and the four years of service on our planning commission. May God bless you in your future endeavors, as you have blessed all of us with your leadership.
Thank you, Deb.
On behalf of our commission, Holly Hennies, Commission Manager Holly Hennies, and Buildings and Grounds found something that I think is very worthy of what you needed, so thank you, Commissioner, or Commission Manager Holly. And Buildings and Grounds, they actually made this personally for you, which I think is pretty amazing. That's beautiful. So thank you for your service, Commissioner Lassiter.
I'll hold that way. Well, I thank you very much. It was a great pleasure serving in Pennington County. I, you know, I retired in two thousand and fifteen and then came on the Planning Commission right away, and I've enjoyed working with the Planning Commission and learning a lot about the county government, and then decided to run for commission and got that, you know, four years later. So I've learned quite a bit. It's going to be kind of bittersweet leaving the county, since I've been kind of forced to move from my property. We just couldn't find a place in Pennington that fit our family and fit for what we were doing. So don't expect you won't see me in the future. I will be up here again, and who knows? Maybe we'll cross paths in a different manner. But it's been, it's been a pleasure, and I like work with everyone here. I like the fact that, you know, the department heads, when I go to their departments, they're willing to visit with me and everything, whenever I'm asking questions or just sit down and chat. Cindy and I have spent a lot of time chatting. Brittany and I have spent a lot of time chatting, Joe. Not necessarily everyone. I know Carol. We've had conversations and the net as well. So I see a few faces out there, but some of them have spent way more time in their office. They probably wanted to kick me out. So, all right, this is my, thank you very much for all your support while I was here, and I'm gonna miss you guys.
For people that don't know what this is, it's a hat rack, because I thought it was a gun rack. So it is, it is a hat rack, so very beautiful. Thank you.
Yeah, they won't hold guns very well.
Well, thank you guys very much for all you've done, and we really appreciate you. Is there any final comments? I know there's Mr. Roskneck on Zoom. Do you have any comments, Mr. Roskneck?
No, I just, it's been enjoyable working with the two of you, and I wish you the best in the future, and don't forget to send postcards, Lloyd, and let us see where you're traveling next.
Thank you.
Once again, thank you for your service.
I am flying out tomorrow, folks. Yeah. So I appreciate, appreciate you guys. Any further comments before we move on with the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
I was just gonna also say thank you for your service as well. So it's been a fast four years, actually, interestingly enough. I didn't realize how fast four years will go, so, but thanks for your service.
Thank you. I will make one other comment. Working with this commission is, has been great. I mean, you look at the strengths and the weaknesses of your commission, and you utilize those, and Travis has always stepped up when it's come to ag or something with the military, and we've always tried to make that happen, but, and I appreciate Gary for stepping up and taking, one of his strengths is public speaking, and I kind of make him do a lot of that stuff as chair, so I really appreciate that and his work with the legislative. And I really appreciate Ron Roskneck's, his intelligence with working with numbers and his hard work and dedication to his constituents. He's always there listening to them, and so I appreciate that. And I appreciate Deb for all the work that she does. She's always willing to work with the people that are tough in the community, but she's, any committee she gets put on, she really gives her a hundred and ten percent. So I really appreciate the commission that we have, as I said, past and present, so thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Nothing else to be said. I will move on to review and approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you.
Moved by Haddock, seconded by Lassiter. Before we vote on this, I just wanted to make note that Commissioner Roskneck is on Zoom. He had a procedure last week, so he is at home. I'm thankful he's aboard, but, so when we go to vote, unless there is a negative vote, we can do it typically how we normally do. If there's a negative, then we'll do a roll call vote. So with that, I'd look for, we have a motion to approve the agenda. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next becomes, on our agenda is the consent agenda. I'll recognize Commission Manager Holly Hennies.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of December third, two thousand and twenty-four. Item B is to assign the two thousand and twenty-four budgeted long-term reserve accumulations in the general fund for IT equipment, eighty thousand dollars. The inmate transportation bus for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Human resources compensation review for fifteen thousand, and the fire long-term reserves in the amount of two hundred thousand. Item C is approval of the vouchers in the amount of four million, eight hundred, twenty-nine thousand, one hundred, seventy-two dollars and sixty-six cents. Item D is to acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct bingo and raffle from the lost volunteer fire department. Item E is to reappoint Mr. John Gloat as the county constable for a two-year term in Legislative District Thirty-three. Item F is to accept the recommendations for the appointments of Patty Bruner, Heather Shembless, John James, Matthew Oden, and Tyler Myers to the two thousand and twenty-five Extension Advisory Board. Item G is to approve the Bateman applications for tax year two thousand and twenty-three for the following parcels. Journey Church, number three seven eight two four, in the amount of six thousand, five hundred, ninety-three dollars and twelve cents. Verizon Wireless, number seven three two oh three, in the amount of one thousand, six hundred, eighty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. Parcel seven three two one eight, in the amount of four hundred, two dollars and seventy-four cents, and parcel seven three seven six four, in the amount of four hundred, seventy dollars and four cents. Keith Karp, eight zero zero seven six eight one, in the amount of seventy-two dollars, forty-two cents. Ellsworth Development Authority, parcel one three six two eight, in the amount of two thousand, four hundred, eighty-five dollars and seventy cents. And finally, American Towers, parcel five nine four eight three, in the amount of two thousand, two hundred, eleven dollars and eighty-four cents. Item H is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of November, two thousand and twenty-four. And finally, item I is to authorize the Natural Resources Department to purchase one two thousand and twenty-four Chevrolet Silverado Regular Cab, one-ton diesel, four-by-four pickup truck from Lamb Motor Company, one oh nine Main Street in Oneida, South Dakota, five seven five six four, utilizing state contract number one seven six one eight, in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, four hundred, forty-three dollars.
Thank you, Holly. At this time, are there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I go to the commission. Is there any items, a commissioner wishes to remove from the items from the consent agenda for further discussion? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Haddock. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd just, I'd just like to recognize John Gloat setting out here. John is returning to county constable for a two-year term. This is his, if I understand this correctly, John has served in this capacity since nineteen eighty-six. So we thank you for your service.
I thank all of you for everything. It's funny, because there's so many.
John, you gotta come up today.
Two of you are leaving today, and I've seen countless, I can't even tell you how many commissioners I've seen in front of these, and all of you have been great, so I appreciate it. And I was with the sheriff's office for eight years before that, so it's been a, been a good run. I'm slowing down now, I'm getting there.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Appreciate it.
Chair.
Anything for Ms. Haddock?
Thank you, John, as well, to your service for, to our sheriff's department, and I do see you a lot for your service as a constable for the county. So we appreciate everything you have to do, because sometimes you have to come back two or three times just to find the people that you have to serve as well. So thank you for your service to us and your dedication to our team.
Thank you, sir.
With that, we do have a motion on the floor for approval. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we come up to regular agenda items, and this is going to be Ellsworth Air Force Base Economic Impact Growth Presentation, and I'll recognize Colonel Derek Oakley. I struggle with pronouncing, so if I pronounced it wrong, forgive me.
All right. Good morning, Pennington County Board of Commissioners. Colonel Derek Oakley, you had it correct the first time. I'm the commander of the Twenty-Eighth Bomb Wing at Ellsworth Air Force Base. We're going to spend just a few minutes talking about the growth and things that are happening at Ellsworth. To do that, I'm going to dive into a couple of topics that I think are helpful to understand as we start to talk about the B-1 mission and the future of B-21 for our air force. I think it's always helpful to understand the why, and so if you don't mind, I'm going to spend just a few minutes diving into some topics. Always best to start with the why, and the why to us is our threats in the world, and so all of us have taken a peek at the news recently and see what's happening around the world. As a Department of Defense and as an air force, we focus on five major areas, what we would call our competitors and sometimes adversaries as we go throughout. So those are Russia, China, North Korea, Iran, and violent extremist organizations, or you might call them terrorists. That has not gone away. It continues to move forward, and so I pulled a couple of slides from U.S. Indo-Pacific Command, really the folks looking at China and North Korea and Russia from the, I would say, the east side of Russia. And so I pulled up these slides. These slides show those major threats. The one that you'll see on here that is not present is Iran, because U.S. Indo-PACOM does not look at Iran, that's U.S. CENTCOM. But obviously, the threat in Iran is real, and we see that most days in the news right now. The one you'll see on here instead is natural disasters. I keep that up there, not that our U.S. military is out to defeat natural disasters, but we're there to support our partners and allied nations around the world when natural disasters happen in their backyards. And so our Department of State is great of supporting other countries, but they just don't have the manpower to support, and the Department of Defense does. And so we're often flying supplies in or people in to support that as it goes. And so I'm going to move through this fairly quickly, because I think it's more important to get to our main threat. When asked, our Secretary of the Air Force was asked, you know, what is the most challenging threat to our nation? He said, it's actually very simple. I have three things I'm concerned about: China, China, and China. And so I brought up some China slides to help add some perspective. So as you look at these slides, let me describe them a little bit for you. The area of orange in the middle, which is listed as the area of PLA, so People's Liberation Army, the Chinese army influence there. As you look to the west side of that, that is the Chinese coast. That influence is going out into the ocean, and you can see it reaching basically the coast of Japan. Those circles with U.S. flags in them are U.S. bases in Japan, Korea, and then the middle of the screen is Guam. On the left-hand side, you're seeing the forces in China, and on the right-hand side, you're seeing the forces of the U.S. in the Indo-Pacific region. So I will orient you to say those are only the forces in the Indo-Pacific region looking at that threat. There are way more forces than that throughout our Department of Defense. And so this is nineteen ninety-nine. Today happens to mark the twenty-seventh anniversary of my entrance into the air force. So I came in as a prior enlisted maintainer. In nineteen ninety-nine, I was working on F-16s in Southern California Edwards Air Force Base. And if you looked at China at that time, you would say, you know, China was pretty low threat. They were a bit of a growing country, but they were struggling economically, and they're struggling in many ways. You can see kind of their forces on the left-hand side versus our forces. On the right-hand side, you can see what Chinese equipment looked like at the time, and you would argue it kind of looks like Cold War Soviet technology kind of passed down to China as it got old in Russia. And so at the time, I labeled this slide strategic overmatch, because the U.S. had really good strategic overmatch against China at the time. Then September eleventh happened. I became an officer in two thousand, I became a pilot in two thousand and one, and we started to go to war in the Middle East against terrorist threats. The Global War on Terror began in Afghanistan, in Iraq, in Syria, and built over the next fifteen to twenty years of doing that fight. And so as I move forward, you'll see what happened while we were doing that. So this is today. That's still China. You can see that area of influence has grown significantly. It reaches all the way out to the island of Guam at this point. You can see the forces in China have built up, because we economically supported China, and while we supported China, China started to also build a military. And so they built quite a military against us and other folks out in the world. On the right-hand side are our forces, and you can see just the forces in U.S. Indo-PACOM have not grown very much. We picked up fifth-generation fighters, and then as you look to the far right, you'll see the Chinese forces start to look a lot more like our forces as we move forward. And so I relabeled the slide peer competitor. We often use the term near-peer. I think that's, that sometimes just makes us feel better about ourselves, but let's not argue with ourselves. China is a peer competitor to us at this point, and they're continuing to grow. So I move forward to two thousand and twenty-seven. If you ask many of our senior leaders, you'll see them wear patches that say two thousand and twenty-seven, which is where they think China has its best attempt at being able to do something against Taiwan. And as they look at that, you can see the growth continuing for China. So you can see their forces have grown immensely. You can see their area of influence has reached all the way out into the Pacific, and then you can see our forces have not grown much. As you look at their forces on the right, they actually look like our more advanced forces. I try to caution folks that, you know, even though they look like ours, they are not ours. We still have far more advanced technology, but they're constantly stealing our technology and turning it into their own as they go. And so, so I like to bring up this slide and try to help describe the threat. So as I look at what my B-1 forces would do against a Chinese threat at this point, we're likely going to be in the Pacific region, shooting long-range missiles into China to try to take down threats to allow ourselves access into China. That is a different scenario than what will happen when I have a B-21 in the future. So the B-21 is a sixth-generation advanced stealth bomber. It will be able to access into China through all of this threat region and be able to strike at a time and place of its choosing. So to describe that and to help most of us in the U.S. understand that, I try to use us as an example. So we would love to keep China at bay off the California, Oregon, Washington coast. We'd send our F-22s out, we would intercept them, and if necessary, we'd shoot them down to make sure that they wouldn't get access to our country. That's a totally different way to fight a threat than if a bomber showed up over South Dakota right now, and we had no sense it was coming and it was just here. I would, I would argue, maybe a year ago, when the balloon showed up over us, that was a good eye-opener for us. But imagine that being a nuclear or a conventional bomber that showed up over the top of us. That's what B-21 brings for us against China. We'll be able to show up at a time and place of our choosing in that country and be able to access from inside the country and fight our way out versus being able to fight off the coastlines trying to find our way in. So let's talk a little bit about Ellsworth, and we'll move into the future. So my mission is very simple. Win today, dominate tomorrow. We have two missions at Ellsworth right now. The first one is we need to be able to fly B-1 operations every day. If you ask us as American taxpayers to go to war, your expectation of me is that I need to be able to win it, and I promise you, every day, we train to that, to be able to win our nation's wars. But as we look to the future and the first sixth-generation bomber in the B-21, we're no longer talking about winning against our adversaries, we're talking about dominating our adversaries. And so I think we need to start thinking in a way of domination. The other thing I try to use this is for my everyday airmen. Every day they show up to work, I expect them to win. I expect them to put a hundred percent into everything they do that day, knowing that tomorrow has its own challenges. But as they look to tomorrow, they need to look at ways to improve their work centers, so that way, again, we become a dominant force in the future. The rest of the slide I'm going to try to describe as we move throughout this briefing, we do have world-class airmen, we do build upon our radar legacy, and we are the premier bombing and cutting-edge long-range strike. The best example of that is February of this past year. If you're familiar, in January, we had a plane crash on our ramp, on our, sorry, on our runway, went off the side of the runway, and we ended up having to close down our airfield while we were trying to clean that up. We were lucky enough to clean up enough to get some aircraft off the runway and move down to Dias Air Force Base, our sister base in Texas. When we were down there, we were tasked to execute an immediate response force mission, and we launched bombers around the world to react to a unmanned aerial system that struck at Tower Twenty-two, which is a small outpost in the Iraq-Syria area. We responded with B-ones. What little, what most people don't know is that actually our forces, our people at Ellsworth were at Tower Twenty-two at the time. And so not only did we respond, so I had forces there, I had forces that responded to Tower Twenty-two after the mishap, or after the attack, but we also launched our bombers to show a sense of retaliation back against them. So we are, again, we are the first call of our combat commanders when there's a problem. And then on the bottom is what I'm charged with. I'm expected to lead people, improve my unit, manage my resources, and execute my mission every day, and I take that to heart. So we talked about world-class airmen. I just want to show you a little bit of what we've been up to recently. So the top two pictures. A few months ago, North Korea launched a missile test. They launched it in the Pacific Ocean, and the U.S. decided it needed to show some sort of a response and to be able to pair up with our allies and partners. And so that B-1, the upper-left-hand picture, is up there with both Japanese and North Korea, or South Korean forces. That's significant. If you take your history back to World War II, you would recognize that the Koreans and the Japanese don't get along very well, and so for them to show up together with a B-1 in response to North Korea is a big, a big move within the world. The right picture is us coming back and landing after that mission. The bottom pictures are us moving airplanes and things through Grand Forks in North Dakota, and you're going to hear from that, a little bit about that here at the end, as we start to move some airplanes that way, because we have to redo our runway as part of the B-21 construction project. But that's us doing what we'd call hot pits, where we land, put gas on the airplane while the airplane's still running, and fly more missions, and then obviously our airmen up there are supporting them. So if you're not familiar with the B-1 mission, we are the last variable wing platform out there, which means our wings sweep back and forth. We're also the only supersonic bomber in the world. While we talk about that, there are only three bombers in all the allied forces. Those are the B-1, the B-2, and the B-52, and you'll recognize those are all U.S. bombers. There are no other allied or partner-nation bombers in the world. So when it comes to bomber forces, it's us. There's a hundred, about a hundred and forty-five bombers in the world, and we're doing all the work that it takes to do those missions. For the B-1, we've got the largest payload of any of those bombers. We're also the fastest and easiest to respond. We're a conventional bomber only, we are not a nuclear bomber, which also means that we have access into some nations that, that don't want to have a nuclear bomber be able to land on their, on their pavement. We carry about seventy thousand pounds in munitions of various types. You can see in the middle picture, those are the joint air-to-surface standoff munitions. Those are what we'd likely launch into a foreign country from hundreds of miles away. And we're persistent. As long as we've got gas and we've got enough to keep my air crew awake, we will keep flying those missions and keep going upwards of normally somewhere around thirty hours at a time. Here's a quick look at two years of what Ellsworth Air Force Base does. You can see red boxes are all over the world, because we are all over the world. We spend a lot of time, like I said, in the Indo-Pacific region. You can see on the far-right side of the slide Guam. We spend a lot of time in Guam. The other one we spend a lot of time in is Diego Garcia, which is just south of India. We had just gone back in there the first time in fifteen years. The last time we operated out of there was as part of the Global War on Terror. So we're often flying, you can see we've hot-pitted into Australia, we've hot-pitted into Japan, we've flown missions, we just dropped some weapons in South Korea on some ranges. We've been up into India three times in the past few years. We plan to go back there in the future. We circumnavigate the Arabian Peninsula to let Iran know that we're still a presence. We've spent a lot of time up in Europe as well. We were actually in Sweden when Sweden joined NATO, and so we make a pretty good presence when you need us. And then obviously, you can see operations even within the continental U.S. and then down into South, South America. But more importantly, I think, is looking at the pictures on the bottom, those are all allied and partner-nation aircraft that we're flying with and supporting. And so the way we operate is in two ways. We operate in bomber task forces, which means we deploy for about thirty to forty-five days, execute our missions, and then come back home. And the other way is what we would call global, or sorry, CONUS-to-Conus global power missions. So CONUS, it just means continental U.S. Think of fly out of Ellsworth, fly around the world, and fly back to Ellsworth, and those are those thirty-hour missions that I spoke of. 30-hour missions that I spoke of. We also on our base have an MQ-9 Reaper squadron. We have none of the airplanes on the base, so if you come to the base looking for them, you won't find them. The controllers, though, are on the base. So the folks you see in the picture, that's a pilot on the left-hand side, a sensor operator on the right-hand side, and then usually an intel body attached to them. I always say they're the ones taking the picture. There are, again, that crew of three, they show up, they go on shift, they plug in, and they pick up an MQ-9 Reaper somewhere in the world, executing combat missions every day. And then they unplug and they go home to their families at night. So you can imagine the resources and support necessary for those folks is a little bit different than even for my own bomber crews, because, again, to unplug and an hour later be having dinner with your family after seeing some of the things they see every day is pretty difficult. So as we dive into the B-21 Raider and growth at Ellsworth, just a quick overview, B-21 Raiders being built by Northrop Grumman. It is both a conventional and nuclear bomber. As I said, right now, we are a conventional base. So building airplanes isn't easy, but it's easier. Building facilities on an airfield are easy. Changing the culture of a community and a base is difficult. And so that's a lot of what I do every day, is trying to help us transition to a, both a conventional but also a nuclear culture of how we're going to operate slightly different when we get a nuclear bomber, nuclear-capable bomber on our ramp. Right now, there are six aircraft in production. They're currently in flight test. The best way to describe where we're at right now is the first airplane takes off, and you make sure that when you pull back on the stick, the airplane flies away from the ground, and then when you push forward, it lands back on the ground. But after that, you need to start expanding that envelope. And so we're in the envelope-expansion phase of what we're doing. Once we expand the envelope, we also start to make sure that all the mission systems in the airplane work, and that eventually that we can drop the weapons that we've tasked it to do. Once we've reached a good maturity of design is when they'll start building the first B-21s that will come to Ellsworth. And so when often asked, you know, when are B-21s coming? The answer you hear from us is in the mid-2020s. I am fully aware that we are at the mid-2020s. I often say 2021 to 2029 is the mid-2020s. But as soon as we know when the first B-21 will arrive, we'll make sure that everyone else knows. But right now, it's in flight test. And again, once they reach that maturity of design, we'll get a better understanding of the timelines for Ellsworth. There is a minimum of 100 aircraft being built by the Air Force. There are three bases at which it's going to go to. Ellsworth will be the first. Second will be Whitman Air Force Base in Missouri, where the B-2 resides right now, and the last will be Dias Air Force Base, our sister base in Texas. And so both the B-1s and the B-2s will be replaced with B-21 in the future. So what are we at on the base? We're doing a lot of work on option maintenance. I'm going to show you some pictures of that. We're also working some of the command and control functions to pick up some of those nuclear capabilities in the future. And then our medical community has to do some work to grow, to make sure we can accept and ensure nuclear surety, which means that anyone who's touching anything nuclear, you can trust that they're the right people to do that. We've got over 40 projects happening on the base, 42 total, 37 B-21 projects, over $1.5 billion in construction on B-21, and about another $500 million in other associated projects to include our runway, which we'll talk about. Our first construction project was our low-observable maintenance facility that was funded in '21. We expect to take ownership of that building next year. And then there are 15 projects already awarded and underway all throughout the facility. And if you haven't had a chance to come to Ellsworth, I offer it all the time. Reach out to me, let me know, and I'll give you a tour of the base and let you see what that looks like real time. Over a billion dollars of construction on Ellsworth right now. This slide shows growth and expectations. I recognize that there's some, it's lacking in some areas, and I'll talk about that as we go. So the easiest way to understand this slide is to look at the bottom. The total growth as we move through this project is about 4,000 people total at Ellsworth. That includes about 1,664 military, 915 spouses, and 1,485 children. You'll see the civilian and contractor area is zero, because I do not know what the contractor presence is going to look like that comes with the airplane. And trying to predict that in the future is really, really difficult as an Air Force. So all we can do is predict our Air Force numbers, which is what you're seeing on this slide. The other thing I'll orient you is FY '25 is where we're at as of October. So we're in fiscal year '25 for the DOD. You can see that's where the knee and the curve starts to climb. It continues to climb until 2041. So in the next 15 years is where we'll experience that growth. And it's not linear. It looks linear on the slide. It is not linear. So we'll see big influxes of people, and then they'll slow down for a little bit, and then we'll get more growth. But this is the easiest way to depict it. So we're about 7,500 folks on the airfield right now, and we do expect to grow to about 11,800 folks total. So we're about another 50% growth of what we're seeing at the base. Here's our 17-year economic and personal growth slide. So we looked back at 2013 and looked forward to 2030 to try to help the community understand what's happening. So again, right now, we're at $1.27 billion of current construction happening on the base. In 2013, we had about 350,000 as our economic impact into the state and the local community. You can see where we're at right now in 2023. It's $886 million, and by 2026, we predict $1.16 billion of impact to the state and to the local community. To date, we paid $5.9 million of tax and $37 million worth of total direct tax into our state, the state to be able to do what we do. And so the other thing I want you to recognize is, even on the backside of the major construction, which is really in that 2026 to 2028 period, we still decreased down to much higher than we were when we even started this project. So we'll still be over $600 million every year that we're putting into the state. This is a picture of what Ellsworth will look like in 2030. If you've been on the base and seen some of the construction, it was really easy a few years to go to describe it because most of the buildings were purple. They were wrapped up and getting ready to put their external walls on. If you drove around the base right now, you wouldn't be able to pick out the old facilities from the new facilities because all the exterior walls are on now. But in the upper-right-hand corner, the mission planning facility, the formal training unit, the field training detachments are all in really good places. Again, we expect to take ownership of them in the next year. Ops-1, which is the 34th Bomb Squadron right now, will be our next major project where we'll basically gut that building and start over again and rebuild it back up for B-21. That'll be the first operational unit. And the formal training unit, the FTU listed on that slide, is the first schoolhouse. So what's neat about Ellsworth is we are the schoolhouse for B-21 aviators. So nobody will fly a B-21 if they don't come to Ellsworth first. So they'll all come through us. They'll learn to fly, and they'll either stay at Ellsworth or they'll move down to Whitman Air Force Base or Dias Air Force Base in the future. And then the three major hangars you see right through the middle of the slide, the low observable, the wash rack, and the radio frequency measurement facility, those are all under construction right now. And we're just getting ready to start on almost everything else on this slide. And so, again, it's a busy time, and in 2030, our ramp will look completely different than what it does right now. Lastly, I just want to cover where we're at in the near term. So one of the things we had to do, every 50 years, our runway needs to be redone. You know, I try to explain potholes in the road matter to us, too, in an airplane. And when your airplane's 400,000 pounds and it flies at 200 miles per hour, when it hits the concrete, that tears up that concrete pretty easily. And so we're about 42 years into our runway project. We could wait another eight years, but we feel like that'll be in the middle of arrivals of B-21, and that's probably not a good place to be. And so we decided to fix our runway before B-21 arrives. And so we've decided, as of 1 February, we're going to close down our runway, and we're going to get it renovated through November of this next year. So for that 10-month period, we're going to take 17 B-1s, all of our B-1s off the ramp, and about 800 personnel, and we're going to move them up to Grand Forks in North Dakota. Grand Forks is a former B-1 base. The B-1s left there in 1994, and since then, they fly the RQ-4 and MQ-9 missions, remotely piloted aircraft up there. They've still got space. That's the ramp on the bottom and the runway on the top. So they've got plenty of space for us to put B-1s back up there. So as of 1 February, our runway closes. So what will, how will that affect the local community? It won't. About 800 of my folks, so that still means 3,000 airmen are still on the base doing their job every day. What it means is the sound of freedom will be gone for a period of time while we continue to work that. So for those who live off the end of the runways, you'll get woken up in the middle of the night. You'll get to sleep a little bit better. But in the same way, I'll say, when you get woken up in the middle of the night because we're off to do our nation's bidding, I apologize. You won't get to hear that. That'll happen from Grand Forks for a period of time. The other thing I want to make sure you are aware of is that B-1s return back to Ellsworth before we make a B-21 transition. So this is not a movement for us to move B-1s up to Grand Forks and they disappear. No, they're just temporarily relocated while we do this project, and we will bring them back. And so B-1s will not leave Ellsworth Air Force Base until their divestment when B-21 arrives. All right. With that, I'll take any questions the board might have.
Thank you, Colonel. Really appreciate you taking your time to come educate us and the public on what's happening. I know you do luncheons quite often and trying to educate the elected officials and other community members. And so I really appreciate you taking your time to come here and educate us and give us a firsthand view of what's happening out there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chair.
Ms. Hagcock.
So do you think in the future administration that it's going to be more building up our military for the future, or because of the threat of China and other countries kind of ramping up a little bit, it looks like? That's from TV, of course, but we don't know what's happening behind the scenes like you do. But I'm hopeful that they will protect our military and our country first, just from watching what's going on. And what do you think for the future administration? And basically, like you say, and I like your mission, win today, dominate tomorrow. Do you think that's going to be the administration coming forward?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the question. I don't think it matters based upon, to be transparent, our military operates the way it's best for our American people, regardless of the administration. I think that we see the threat as a real threat, and again, not just in China, but all throughout our world. And so as an Air Force, I know specifically for us as an Air Force, we are looking to grow as a service. I think we look at the threat. If you talk, we'll just talk China for a few minutes, you know, that conflict occurs over an ocean, which is a little more difficult than, you know, landlocked countries where you can put forces on the ground and operate. And so I think our Air Force recognizes that it needs to grow. Even in the B-21, we talk 100 airplanes, but oftentimes, our senior leaders are saying we need more than 100 B-21s as we move into the future. 145 bombers is not enough to do everything that we need to in the world right now, and we need to grow that force. And so from an Air Force perspective, I definitely think we need to grow our military, and our senior leaders have said that as well.
And I hope that's true because, number one, it's about the cash flow, right? So they have to support you in one way, but don't have to. But we're hoping, and I'm hoping for future administrations, whether it be Senate, House, or the President, that they understand that our safety and our citizens are first, public safety. You already know that. So for me, I would be hopeful that the cash flow would be enough to be able to support not only, you know, the air, but the ground and the water that is around us. So I also have been to some of your meetings that you've had. The Water Board had you speak at their meeting. And I like how I've seen you in the community and your base, that how you engage not only in the military, but you engage in your community. I have not seen, and I've been in politics for a while, how much that you have shown your leadership through doing that, just barbecues and luncheons and just informing the public about the B-1, the B-21, and just your team of military personnel. So I appreciate your service, sir, your 21 years of service as well, and what you're doing not only for your base in our nation, but for our community here in Pennington County, sir.
Chair.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Drews.
So Colonel, as you rehab the runway, is that strictly a rehab of the existing runway, or do you need to create additional length to that also?
Yeah, it's a great question, sir. The answer is, we just need to go down the first 12 inches of the runway, and it's the center 75 feet of the runway. So it's not even the entire runway. We do need to repair both ends of the runway, again, where the impact zones are. But for the rest of the runway, it's a 75-foot wide by one foot depth, the entire length of the runway. And that's the piece that really closes us down. So if we just had to do one end of the runway or the other end of the runway, we could displace our threshold. We could operate on that airfield. But right now, we are not expanding our runway. There's no need to expand our runway for B-21.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Thank you very much for your service, and thank you for the presentation today. Appreciate it. Colonel?
Thank you.
You got my curiosity. How thick is the runway?
[laughing]
Well, you got to talk about 12 inches, and there's still more left. That kind of, as someone who does construction, I wonder...
You've got multiple layers on a runway. So you've got, obviously, there's a base stabilization layer, then you've got concrete, and then usually there's an asphalt layer in there to help protect that runway from the impacts, and then you have concrete laid over the top of that. So again, we're going to go down the concrete level till we hit that asphalt, and that's the piece that we need to replace. So the concrete is just spouting. It's breaking.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Absolutely. I've learned more about runways than I thought I'd ever known as well.
Is there any more further questions from the commission?
Good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And this is attached to the agenda, the slides, so the public could always go back and take a look at these. Next, that brings us up to item number eight, items from the auditor. And I'll recognize the auditor, Cindy Muller.
Good morning, Commissioner Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. The first item that we have is a retail on-off sale wine and cider license renewal for Black Hills helicopters. We would ask for approval of that.
Are there any questions for Cindy? If not, I go to the board.
Moved.
Second. Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Laster to approve the renewal of the retail on-off wine and cider license renewal for Black Hills helicopters and release the license upon payment of appropriate taxes. Any further discussion? Hear none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Whoa. That was a yea, wasn't it? Ron?
That was an aye, yes.
Okay, thank you. And I'll do a better job. I didn't go to the screen to ask if you had any comments on the last presentation, but I'll keep that in mind moving forward. So we do have motion on the floor, or no, the motion was unanimous. So next, that brings us up to item B.
Which is the renewal of the retail on-off sale liquor license with Sunday sales for Moonshine Gulch Saloon LLC. Would ask for approval of that renewal.
Is there any questions for Cindy on this renewal? Any from the public? I come back to the commission.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Hagcock and seconded by Laster to approve the renewal of retail on-sale liquor license with Sunday sales for Moonshine Gulch Saloon LLC and release the license upon appropriate property taxes. Any further discussion? Any from the public? See none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
The final one is in regards to the discharge of the indentured liens with the 30-year limit on outstanding balances. And there was an error in some of the programming, so the amount on that resolution, the order to rescind was, we need an order, or we need, geez, I can't even...
Two motions.
Excuse me. We need a motion to rescind the motion that was made on October 1st so that then we can redo that with the correct amount.
Is there any questions for Cindy on this? Any from the public?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Moved to rescind the October 1, 2024 resolution directing the Pennington County Commission to discharge county aid liens with no activity for 30 years in the amount of $482,903.51.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? See none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Moved to approve the chair's signature on the resolution to discharge county aid liens with no activity for 30 years in the amount of $452,252.38.
Second.
Moved by Laster and seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Hear none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have item number nine, and this is item, items from the Sheriff, Brian Muir.
You look purdy today.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner. It's a busy day today. We have a lot of exciting things going on here in Pennington County today. We have the LNI red carpet going on this afternoon. Hope to see some of you there. And we're on night two of four of Shop with a Cop. We have second night at Target tonight and two nights at Walmart, where we take families that maybe can't afford Christmas gifts for their... take families that maybe can't afford Christmas gifts for their kiddos and take them shopping. So, the chief and I are going to be out shopping tonight. If you want to come down and see what that's about, come down to Target at 6 o'clock, and we'll plug you in somewhere. It sure makes you feel good about our community to come out and see those types of events. So, but I did dress up for you today, too.
It looks nice.
Commissioner Hagcock, I appreciate you.
I like your outfit.
I just wanted to just take a minute and thank the board, and specifically when it comes to wages. And I know we've had a lot of heavy lifting the last couple of years when it comes to wages for our employees. And it can get emotional at times. It can get emotional if you're a taxpayer. It can get emotional if you're somebody requiring services from the county. And it certainly can get emotional for our staff that are looking around at what other entities are paying for similar work. And as an elected official who has over 450 employees, I can just tell you, it's a big deal to be able to treat our staff right and make them feel valued and appreciated. And I just wanted to share a good news story with you and, you know, give you part of the win for this. And when I took office at the heels of COVID, we had over 55 openings at the sheriff's office. And that wasn't specifically related to wages, but we were pretty behind on a lot of wages for the last couple of years in the region, as all of you know, through the processes we've gone through the last two years. In January last year, we were close to 40 positions down still. We are projected in January of this year to be down between 12 and 15 positions. And some of those were purposely holding open for a variety of different reasons. But that's not all related to pay, because I give a lot of the kudos to our staff, to the county as a whole for what we've done for recruiting over the last couple of years has been impressive, how we work together with our other elected officials and department heads, the support the commission has given to the employees, our line-level staff, our line-level trainers, supervisors, and administrators, how we're treating our staff and showing the value. And it's tough to motivate people with money to do the work that we do here at Pennington County, I think. A lot of what we do specifically in public safety is a front row seat to life, and it's not all pretty. And there certainly isn't anybody that gets into this line of work to get rich, and that's certainly not how we're keeping our quality employees here at Pennington County. It's how we're treating them, and we're hiring the right people who are really oriented to serve. And that's really a testament to the good work that we're doing. So, with the fact that we're, you know, within two corrections positions of being fully staffed at the jail to two years ago, I think we were 35 positions down, I just think that that's a big win for the team of Pennington County. And I just wanted to stand up and thank you for your continued support. We still have a lot of work to do in that area, specifically with law enforcement. We're starting off the year, we're still $2 an hour behind the Rapid City Police Department, probably our biggest competitor. In July, they're scheduled to get a 2% cost of living on top of that, which is going to put us about $2.60 behind. But I look forward to continuing to work with those of you that will be here still in the new year on trying to bridge that gap just a little bit further. But it goes a long ways. And so, on behalf of me and our staff, I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And I will say, you heard me speak earlier of what Pennington County does, you know, you look at the, as the people as human beings first and working with them, and not only the compassion from the employees, you know, 400 employees with the sheriff, you deal with some very difficult people and situations. And like, as I said, you look at them as human beings first, and then second, working with the problems. And so, kudos to all involved, all of Pennington County and the Sheriff's Department for the work that you do with people in the public. I mean, quite often, you don't hear enough of the success stories that are out there because people don't want to share them. But quite frankly, you know, you guys save lives, future, and you save taxpayers money with dealing with people, because they change. You know, sometimes it takes incarceration, sometimes it takes treatment, sometimes it takes, each one's a little bit different. But you guys have really worked hard to look to where the needs are and to deliver the services that save the taxpayers money.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thanks.
Next on our agenda is item number 10, is items from Buildings and Grounds, and I'll recognize Director Davis Purcell. Oh, excuse me, Kevin Burton.
Yeah, Davis had a baby appointment, so I get to fill in. So, Kevin Burton, Construction Manager, bringing before you today our request to award the bid for the Juvenile Services Center parking lot. Parking lot has been repaired multiple times, showing a lot of signs of age and wear. We looked at doing it phased-wise and also looked at replacing the asphalt with asphalt or going to hard concrete instead. And so, we elected to go with the concrete because it holds up so much better, and it's a lot better for the plows. So, this project is to dig out the base, put in a new base, and six-inch concrete slab. In the process, we're also replacing the three pole lights, the parking lot lights that are out there that had rusted through, and were creating problems. And this is all funded from Buildings and Grounds Capital Improvement Fund.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there any questions for Kevin? If not, I'd come to the board. Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I come to the board.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to award the contract for the JSC Parking Lot Replacement Project to Dakota Asphalt, the amount of $384,000 to be funded through the Buildings and Grounds Capital Improvement Fund, with the contract to be executed by Davis Purcell in 2025, and project completion expected by the end of 2025.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Laster. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, and hope you all have a Merry Christmas.
You, too. Next on our agenda is items from the Highway Department. I'll recognize Highway Superintendent Joe Miller.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Superintendent. Up in front of you, item A here is Resolution for Big Grant Program Applications. This year, we're submitting for, let's see here, make sure I get my numbers right, four, excuse me, five, two rehabilitations, two preservations, and one reconstruction projects. This will be our fifth year being able to submit for these applications. As of November, we'd collected approximately $3.4 million in wheel tax revenue. We projected 3.5, so with December, we should exceed that hopefully. That wheel tax actually allows us to apply for these funds and funds the county's match to those projects. To date, we've received $4 million from the big fund in grants and funding for those. 2025, like I said, we've got two rehabilitations, two preservations, and one reconstruction. Oh, excuse me. I was right. Misread that, sorry. 2025, we're going to, man, my notes suck today. Sorry about that.[1119.32][1119.32][laughing]
You got two separate items, but we have two on this one and then one on your next one.
Yep. So, 2025, we have set to be completed a total of three reconstructions and one preservation project. So, those are our big funded projects. There's one reconstruction on Highway 1416 that is done with completely local dollars because it's not eligible for big funds. The 2025 cycle, local funding is approximately $1.4 million. The majority of that, about a million dollars of that is our Highway 1416 bridge. And then, the total from the state big funds was $254,000. And then, from the federal bridge grant is $1.8 million. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Is there any questions? And on this item, there is two separate motions that need to be done on this. So, is there any questions from the public on this? Hearing none, I'd go to the board. Is there any questions from the board? Hearing none, I'd come to the board. Oh, Joe's got one more.
I think there's only one motion on this one. The second one has two motions.
No. Item A...
Other way around.
Yeah, other way around. That's why I think you were kind of confused when you're, I thought you were presenting both of them. The first one's the right-of-way utility certificates.
Oh, I had my order mixed up. I apologize.
I thought it was a little bit. So, do you need to explain a little bit more about these ones?
The right-of-way utility certificates, these, those certificates are just certifying that we have all the right-of-way and all the utility certifications. All the utility companies have been notified, and we've acquired all the right-of-way from the landowners. We do have one landowner that we still need to acquire right-of-way from on 159th. That's the reason for the two motions on that. We're still actively working towards that with the motion that we presented in front of you will allow us to continue working on that till the applications are due, so.
Thanks. Since your notes are mixed up, I'm going to say that you gave a good description of item B, which is the Resolution 2024 1271 Big Grant Applications. You gave an explanation. We'll be voting on that on the third item, just for the people watching who don't know. So, with that being said, we do have two motions on the utility certificates and right-of-way.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Moved to approve utility certificates for Bridge. Bridge is 52-312-311 and 52-590-291.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Moved to approve right-of-way certificate for Bridge 52-312-311 and approve right-of-way certificate for Bridge 52-590-291, pending signatures from one landowner.
Moved by Laster.
Second.
Seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And since you already gave the description, I'll go straight to the commission on this one. Does any public comment on Resolution 2024 12171 Big Grant Applications? Hearing none, I'd go to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I move to approve Resolution 2024-12-17-1, authorizing Pennington County to submit Bridge Improvement Grant Program applications for Bridges 52-310-306 and 52-312-311 and 52-318-318 and 52-320-312 and 52-590-291.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Laster. Yeah, by Laster. Anything you want to say? Joe?
No, I apologize for the mix-up this morning.
Okay. Any discussion from the public? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Next, that brings us up to item number 12. This is items from Human Resources, and I'll recognize Director Carol Bancroft.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Bancroft, HR Director for Pennington County. The first item that we wanted to discuss with you is the market analysis and recommendation for the State's Attorney, but I have a file that I want to pull up to talk through. I know you have it in your packet, but I wanted to make sure that the public can see it as well. So, this is the market analysis, which I completed as far as looking at comparable salaries for our State's Attorney. The first thing that I did is I looked at comparable positions within Pennington County itself. So, the first line that you'll see here is our county State's Attorney, that the base by resolution is $135,000. The current salary that our State's Attorney Laura Retzel is at is $140,400. And then, the resolution that was approved for 2025, that that is taking it to $142,506. So, comparing that to the public defender, that in 2025, the public defender would be at $152,381, and our sheriff, coroner, would be at $158,340. I also then looked at as far as comparable salaries for County State's Attorney in Minnehaha County. So, in 2025, that would be at $186,826. Lincoln County in 2025 will be at $173,052. Mead County will be at $106,192. Brown County will be at $140,000. Brookings County will be at $159,943. And then, I also looked at municipalities of the larger two within the state of South Dakota. So, the city of Sioux Falls, the city attorney will be at $217,360. And the city of Rapid City, city attorney, will be at $167,786. And those are actually 2024. They have not been established yet for 2025 for the city attorneys. So, in doing the analysis, what I did is down here on the left-hand side, that those that are highlighted in yellow were used to find what the average would be as far as salaries. So, I did not include the highest, which is Minnehaha County State's Attorney, and the lowest in this analysis, which is Mead County State's Attorney. So, that average comes out to $156,743. And I did not include the municipalities in this analysis either. They're just comparison points. And so, our State's Attorney for Pennington County is at $142,000, so that's a difference, a shortfall of $14,237. My recommendation is that we would move the State's Attorney to, since this is the first that in January where she will be the elected official versus the appointed official as the State's Attorney, that we would move that salary to $158,340, so it's comparable to the sheriff and coroner, because they both have the same base rate as well, and very comparable years of service. So, that is my recommendation. But I know that our State's Attorney Laura Retzel would like to speak to this as well.
Thank you. And you're done? I'd like to have Laura speak first before I go to the commission to ask questions from either one of you. Laura?
We can ask Carol questions first.
I'd kind of like to hear from both sides, and then we can come back and ask.
Good morning. I am Laura Retzel, as always honored to be your State's Attorney. I'd like to thank you, first of all, again, for the appointment and the opportunity to finish Mark Vargo's term, and for the opportunity to be heard today on the issue of my salary. I want to start with sharing some history that I think helps illustrate my work ethic and dedication to the community. I haven't gotten a lot of opportunities to talk about who I am, and I think that that matters when setting someone's salary. So, I'm a fourth-generation Rapid Cityan. I was raised in South Rapid City in the '70s and '80s. Growing up on Texas Street, my parents were a social worker and a telephone switchboard operator. My sister and I were latchkey kids, and the whole community of South Robinsdale raised us. I went to Grandview, to South Junior High, and graduated from Central High School. In 1989, I headed to the metropolis of Lincoln, Nebraska, and there I earned my degrees in psychology and English. I'm a second-generation college student, but a first-generation lawyer. I earned my degree from Creighton University in Omaha. I went there intending to be a prosecutor. It was always my intention to be what I called a lawyer for cops, long before I knew what a prosecutor even was. I have held a job every day of my life since I... I have held a job every day of my life since I turned fourteen years old. The only break I ever took was when I studied for the bar exam, which I did with a one-year-old and a newborn. My dad worked two jobs to put me through college, but after that I was on my own. So, I, like most of my colleagues at the state's attorney's office, graduated with a mountain of student loan debt. I was raised to work hard, and that hard work had to involve contribution to the community that raised me. So, I was hired in nineteen ninety-six by Dennis Groff, but I didn't start until the first day of the new term of the newly-elected state's attorney, who was a young upstart named Glenn Brenner. I ended up serving as Glenn Brenner's state's attorney in two different stints. When he was beaten after sixteen years as state's attorney by Mark Vargo, I ended up serving as Mark's chief deputy for another ten. During my career at the state's attorney's office, I have held literally every position, every attorney position in the state's attorney's office, and I've had the opportunity to do quite a few of the other jobs too, including many days at the reception desk when we were shorthanded and we had to have somebody fill in, which I was grateful to do, happy to do. I have led grand juries. I have convinced petit juries to convict murderers. I have done speeding ticket court trials, mental health commitment hearings. I've represented the county commission. I've advised our department heads. I've helped pass important legislation. I've trained attorneys who are now judges and important state leaders. I have been very, very lucky and am a very, very experienced prosecutor. So, I still describe myself as a crime fighter, but now as state's attorney, I do so much more. I lead an office of seventy with over twenty-five attorneys and a seven-point-five-million-dollar budget. I'm responsible not only for the legal advisement of all of you and of all of our brilliant department heads. I'm also responsible for the casework in over ten thousand cases. Criminal, juvenile, abuse and neglect, mental commitment, alcohol and drug commitment, various types of cases. For the last twenty-seven years, I have watched great men fill the, fill the shoes of the office of state's attorney, and I wondered if I could ever fill those shoes. So, I have been pleased to learn that my own high heels work just fine, and I don't need to fit into anybody else's. In the last six-hundred-and-six days, you have given me the gift of a trial basis as state's attorney and the opportunity for you to see and the community to see what I can do. So, what have I done in the last six-hundred-and-six days? Relations with law enforcement have never been better. Transparency in the state's attorney's office just didn't exist before me. And now we're constantly messaging out our work, good, bad, and ugly, in press releases, in media inquiries, in interviews, in Facebook posts. I even have a podcast, which I'd love for you to listen to. I have never refused a phone call and I have never turned down a request for a meeting with me as state's attorney. We're engaged with the community. We're engaged with victims. We're having listening sessions. We're doing outreach to schools and groups in the community. We're hosting events. Some of them you've attended, including the Night of Remembrance and our Victims' Rights Luncheon. And we're good partners, not just to the state's attorney's office, but to our department head leaders, our other elected officials. We co-located the Child Advocacy Center. We're partners to the Public Defender's Office and the Defense Bar, and I work on a daily basis with the judiciary and other key stakeholders in the justice system to make things more efficient. Eric, Eric Witcher and I worked together to create those major crimes positions that you were so gracious in giving us as FTEs or converting into, or converting FTEs into new roles, um, which led to the formation of my Major Crime Unit, which is going very well. And then Law Enforcement, we've joined together to start the Retail Theft Initiative, which all of you know has been very, very warmly and gratefully received by our community. We're prosecuting now every single theft. By we, I mean my office. We're prosecuting every single theft in Pennington County now, regardless of the value of the item or the type of item that it is, which is what we should be doing. When I came in, we were down seven attorneys out of twenty-five, and we had over thirty murder cases pending in our office. And over the last six-hundred-and-six days, we're full, we're almost full-staffed. We're short one attorney. And that murder tally, we've cleared all of the backlog, almost all of the older cases, and we're down to seventeen from thirty. I've worked hard to improve office culture, including for the creation of my mission statement, which you can see on my wall if you've come to visit me, and that hopefully my entire office can tell you about and understand the core principles that we stand for. I'm working on retention now, and your work implementing the wage scale has meant so much in helping me retain quality individuals all, all across the board of my office. My work on the Compensation Committee helped me understand the value of compensation. Um, it also allowed me to advocate for fair wages for all of our employees, including our department heads and our elected officials and other leaders who deserve to be paid fairly too. Now, you know I'm fiscally conservative. My first year I turned back almost a million dollars to the county at the end of the year, and this year I'm on par to hopefully turn back close to half a million dollars. And that was coming in with a budget that was tight, um, coming into last, coming into this year. So, coming back to why we're here today, I understand that Director Bancroft is recommending my placement right near that, what she calls the county state's attorney average. And I can assure you that throughout my career, I've been called of a lot of things, but average is not one I've heard before. In her memo and in this scale, what you don't see represented is my almost thirty years of experience as a prosecutor, as a civil attorney, as a civil servant in the county, and what you don't see is the value of that experience reflected in that number. I'm just as experienced as the Lincoln County State's Attorney. I'm more experienced in the Brookings, Brookings County and the Minnehaha County State's Attorney. The city attorney, the Rapid City City Attorney, has an office the size of my misdemeanor department and is making a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. The Brookings County State's Attorney, right underneath him at a hundred and fifty-nine, prosecuted approximately a thousand cases last year to my ten thousand. And I don't need to point out any more similarities or any more disparities unless you want me to, but I think you can see the differences that those roles have in the differences that those counties have. And since we're talking about averages, I will tell you that the national average for attorney pay was assessed by the American Bar Association and just released. It's a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. And that's a nineteen-point-two percent increase over the last two years. I mean, these numbers are just getting higher. And the other thing that they noted over the last two years is that attorneys are migrating to states where they can make more money, which is not surprising. And I think we're experiencing that. Certainly, Mr. Witcher and I would tell you that we are experiencing that, that attorneys are leaving South Dakota and going places where they can earn more money. So, speaking of fair and what should be fair, the real fair market value of my position is in Director Bancroft's memo to you. It's in the section marked rationale, where she says other like positions in jurisdictions with similar duties and responsibilities have set salaries in the range of one hundred and seventy-three to one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And then she notes that her recommendation of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars is a minimum recommendation. The bottom line is we have to have experienced lawyers in these roles, and specifically in this role, we need experienced people in the public sector. You don't want an inexperienced person doing this job. And these numbers just can't shock you anymore. You have to have a state's attorney who's qualified to prosecute high-level cases, who's qualified to advise a county commission, and you do not want them to be new or straight out of law school. They clearly need to make more than the base salary of a hundred and thirty-five or the current salary of a hundred and forty thousand dollars assigned to the state's attorney in Pennington County. So, the other consideration is that I ran unopposed, and we could talk all day about why that was, and I'm sure there were a number of factors, but you certainly don't want one of the factors to be pay. And you don't want someone who is qualified and could challenge me to say they're not interested in doing so because the pay does not interest them. So, ultimately, you get to decide what numerical value to assign to my pay. Ultimately, I know that there is really no dollar amount that can compensate me for the career that I, that I have chosen, and I do understand that I've chosen it. The reality of being the Pennington County State's Attorney is that I work sixty hours a week on a good week. Usually, it's quite a bit more. I'm on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year for my law enforcement partners and my lawyers. I've seen crime scenes that no one should ever see. I've held the hand of mothers and wives and fathers and brothers who have lost loved ones or have lost pieces of themselves that they'll never get back. I've missed Christmas Eves, so many Fourth of Julys. I receive death threats. My children have received death threats. And I've seen this career, my career, people out of my office, lost to alcoholism, lose spouses, and lost to mental illness. It is not an easy job. So, I know that no amount of money can make that right. I just want you to understand the, the depth of the work that we do upstairs. Because I do understand that I chose this, and I chose it because it matters to me. And everything I do and every day that I serve is for the same reasons that my brothers and sisters upstairs at the state's attorney's office and across the street in law enforcement do. It's because we're here to do the right thing, and we do the right thing for the right reasons, even when it's hard. And I have chosen to serve my community, and I'm grateful for that. I really am. I'm grateful, uh, that I've now been elected. I'm grateful to start my own term of service. And I'm so proud to lead the state's attorney's office in all of our hard work on behalf of the people of Pennington County. So, I am asking that you set my salary higher than that suggested by Director Bancroft. Uh, the, the way I chose the number I gave you was she took, she took the average of the scale that you see and called it the county state's attorney average. And then she added, I think, two thousand dollars or so to that. She explained all that, and you can ask her questions about it. What I've done is I've taken the top end of the scale, the people above the red line, and I've averaged that because I would perceive myself as certainly, um, the average of the higher-paid state's attorneys, sheriff, um, that was, that was also included in my wage analysis and city attorneys and public defender that were, uh, used as my comparables. So, again, I thank you for the opportunity to be heard and to let you and the community get to know me a little bit better and know my work a little bit better too. So, with that, I would stand for questions.
Thank you, Laura. And this is something new that we, we are doing. And so, what I asked is, is gave the HR uninterrupted chance to speak her side and Ms. Laura Retzel uninterrupted time to be able to explain their sides. Then we'll come back to the commission, and they can ask questions from either ours. I know Ms. Hancock said she, she has a question for Carol. So, give the floor to Ms. Hancock.
So, Carol, um, all your department heads were with the market analysis comparables, and they all did their own budgets through, uh, wages, um, using the Lightcast. Is Laura's any different than what was used on the other, uh, um, department heads?
I did not use Lightcast because the state's attorney position is not one that you would be able to find in Lightcast. It would have just attorneys, which is not going to represent the level of what her position is.
Okay, so when we did the budgets, um, did everybody else on the elected and non-elected ended up doing comparables, market analysis? The state's attorney was involved with that as well? Am I correct?
The state's attorney was not involved with the department head or with the other elected officials that we did earlier last year.
Why is that?
Because she was appointed position and was in that interim session, and so it wasn't analyzed at that time. She was brought in at the one hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Thank you. So, so she has not been in this position. She was appointed in this position for eight months, and that's my point. Um, we do this to employees, and it doesn't matter if it's a department head or employee. We say, how long have you been in that position? Not how long and experience have you had doing in a certain department, if I'm correct? And that's how you get your wages, is how much experience do you has as a leader, not as a person that actually did a different job description before you became that leader or before you became that supervisor, um, years of experience. Yeah, I understand that. But, um, back then, and this isn't a question for you, uh, we went from one-seventeen-five as an appointed official in twenty twenty-three to one-thirty-five, which was an eighteen-thousand-dollar raise, without knowing at that time all the experience. And I thought, um, we did pretty well for that, um, giving an eighteen-thousand-dollar raise. Now, as an elected state's attorney, only a year, she's went from the one-thirty-five with another seven-thousand-dollar raise, which in the last two years has got a twenty-five-thousand-dollar raise. Um, I think that's a pretty good amount for an elected official that just got elected and appointed. It's to have a twenty-five-thousand-dollar raise, which is a hundred and forty-two. Now, we're doing, uh, the same thing we did with the other elected officials, and I'll just tell you, I wasn't in agreement with all that. Um, we're taking her from a twenty-five-thousand-dollar raise. And if you did it with a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, then it gives her... What is it? Hundred and fifty-eight, so she's going from a hundred and thirty-five to one-seventy-seven. A one-thirty-five was twenty-three. She will end up getting a forty-two-thousand-dollar raise from twenty-three to twenty-five. Plus, the eighteen thousand that was given when she was appointed makes her a sixty-thousand-dollar raise in two years or three years. I'm not against giving, uh, State's Attorney Retzel a raise. I'll just say that because of her experience and, um, because of some of the comparables I have looked at. But I think that's over the top. Um, I get the average, and I understood your average, and I, I think it was good. And I, I believe that that average wasn't too bad. But when you're saying that you are over the top and that that average is not good enough, and you're in elected position, I think you're making a pretty bold statement, which I'm okay with Ms. Retzel making that statement, but sixty-thousand-dollar increase is a lot of money. Then you have to ask, and I, I'll need to ask Ms. Retzel, how are you absorbing that into, into your budget? Because this, um, amount shouldn't be absorbed into a budget. It should have been already approved in a budget already, because the budget was not done until September. So, to ask this commission to come out and say, okay, we need to increase your budget or you need to absorb it, which looks bad, that you could absorb, what, forty-two-thousand dollars into your budget when we had a six-million-dollar increase, is a lot to ask the taxpayers at this point. And like I said, I'm not against Ms. Retzel getting a, a raise. I think she should get a raise past the one-forty-two. To do comparables to the private sector, private sector compared to government is out of line, I believe. Um, because if you could go in the private sector, you'd probably be there. And if you could make more money in there, and I appreciate your public service, Ms. Retzel, but, um, some of your statements are pretty bold for being elected official because if it was experience and everything else, um, also, I've been in politics seventeen years. I've been in leadership for many years, um, so has a bunch of the other, uh, department heads as well. So, if we're going to go above average for you... So if we're going to go above average for you, then we're going to start something else again, right? We're going to start a trend that says, I think I'm above average as well. So for me, I don't think it's equitable for the county to give that big a raise. I don't think it's in the budget. And I think if you needed a raise back in the day, like we said, leadership should be last, and I appreciate that comment last time. Your deputy state's attorney makes one thirty-four-five. He does not make one seventy-seven. So to say that the experience and all that counts at the last commission meeting, one thirty-four-five is a lot different than one seventy-seven. One seventy-seven is the top of the scale. That's not average, that's above average. So for me, I don't know where I'm at, because I haven't seen her budget. I haven't seen the papers on the budget. I haven't seen how she's going to increase, or you as well, Ms. Bancroft. How is that going to affect the budget? And is the one seventy-seven plus benefits? And what is that benefits? Does anybody know what the one fifty-eight equals to with benefits and the one seventy-seven that equals with benefits? Because to the private sector, they don't get what we get here in Pennington County or in government. So I would like to know if the one fifty-eight plus the benefits equals the one seventy-eight or the average for the state's attorneys? Because you're going apples to apples or apples to oranges, and I can't see all the comparables to make a good decision. Like I said, I'm not against a raise. I just not seeing all the information in order to make a good decision, and then increase the budget forty-two thousand without any direct information of how that's going to impact, and also no benefits included on the one fifty-eight or one seventy-seven to see what other counties actually give their state's attorneys compared to ours. That's why today I think it should be carried to the next meeting until we get all the information.
Mr. Chair.
What I'm going to, I have Drews in line, and I have Mr. Laster and then myself. One of the questions that I heard from this, what I'd like to do is give every commissioner a chance to either ask a question or make their comments, then come back to the board again. But she did start out with one question that I did hear was, how would you absorb it in your budget?
Yes, so my budget has been approved and submitted. Commissioner Hancock is absolutely correct about that. I could not and did not approach until after November because I was told I needed to be elected, which I now have been. So that was not an option for me to do anything but wait until this point. I would absorb it into my budget, and if I could not, I would come and ask for a supplement like I always do. I run a tight budget. I stated that in my previous statement. In my first year running off of Mark Vargo's budget, I gave back a million dollars. Running off of my own first-year budget, I submitted a budget to you that, I didn't bring that number with me, but I think it was only like a point, it was almost a zero percent increase budget that I presented to you my first year. I think I requested like a three percent increase. That's how much I was able to cut from Mark Vargo's budget and streamline based on my observations of that first part year, April to December in office. Even running off of my own first year's budget, which was all of 2024, as of last Friday, when I talked to my office manager, I anticipate being able to give back close to five hundred thousand dollars. It's very hard to anticipate what expenses will be associated with jury trials and the business of the state's attorney's office, because a lot of that is unknown to us, not knowing who will go to trial and who will not go to trial. So I would think that that amount is small in a budget of seven point five million, given that I've given back between now five hundred and one million, five hundred thousand and one million dollars in my first six hundred and six days.
Okay, I'm going to go to Mr. Drews and then Mr. Laster, and I'll give, I forgot Ron's on Zoom if he'd like to speak before I speak, and then we can go back if we have, want to speak on the second time. Mr. Drews.
So Carol, I'm just trying to flesh out some information. So, and this may be unfair to ask of you at this point also, but had Laura not been appointed, had she stayed in her previous position as the chief deputy and remained there yet today, can you tell me, or can you tell us what her adjustment would be, what she would be earning as of the new year?
I'd really hate to speculate on that. I'd have to go back and research as far as where her compensation was, unless Laura can recall, but she would have been eligible for the one and a half percent COLA that everyone received and a step onto the scale for what she would not lose money. And if there was any compression, that could have been addressed as well.
Okay.
But I don't know the exact amount.
So then I'll switch to Laura. Laura, do you know the answer to that?
Well, I would imagine that the pay of the criminal chief deputy, given that I've been, I have a career spanning twenty-seven years, would have been comparable to the pay of Jay Alderman, which has passed its final audit and has now been submitted to the auditor. Based on my conversations with Director Bancroft yesterday, I would assume it would have been comparable to Jay Alderman's. He's been with the county for approximately twenty-seven years as well, maybe a little bit longer, twenty-eight or twenty-nine years, and the number we submitted for him yesterday, I think, was one fifty-five.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Laster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think one of my questions was already answered, and it was dealing with, why didn't you talk about this during the budget hearing? Primarily because technically you didn't take office until November, is that correct? Even though you didn't have a challenger in that?
Right, I'll take office on January sixth of 2025.
Technically, you're not even in the elected position until then. Fair enough.
Yes, sir.
So with that, I liked your conversation about the above average, but I don't, I think most of our leaders are not above average, even though they're working in county. And you know, that's the problem that we have, is we have county that relies on tax dollars. It is a struggle for me. You know, there's a lot of people that deserve pay raises or they deserve higher pay raises, but we can't do that because we have a limited budget and things of that nature. And that's where I have a challenge with this as well. One of the things you may remember hearing me say multiple times over the years, I don't like a lot of exceptions. I like you to come with everything. But I do understand why this falls into that exception that might be a rarity as opposed to some of the other ones we have. So I guess with that, I do concur that individuals should be paid what they're worth. County can't necessarily do that all the time, so we have to figure it out. And what we need to do here today is to figure out where that number is appropriate for the county, for the taxpayer, and you know, for you to make, I don't want to say what you're worth, because I don't know if everybody's ever paid what they're really worth whenever they're doing a good job. So that's kind of my struggle in some of this thought process, just so you know where I'm at.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Roskinck, do you have any comments before I make a comment?
My only comment would be, I think Carol and Laura both have, you know, strong arguments. I'm kind of a in-between person. I, you know, like Travis said, talking about the taxpayer and then going back to Laura's letter and the accomplishments that she's made, and to me, the cost savings of the county, I guess where I'm going to leave it, I would be supportive of a motion of a number higher than one fifty-eight and lower than one seventy-seven. And that's where I'm at right now.
Thank you. My comment is, is first of all, thank you for your courage, Laura, for coming up and requesting what you have. You know, when we reviewed this a couple of years ago, you come on right about the time we did the elected officials, and I remember that discussion very well. You know, when we were adjusting the wages, and the discussion was, was, you know, we had a lot of deputies, well, just below the either state's attorney, the auditor, like that, where they were very close in wages and what, and so for someone with the experience, we wanted to have years of experience, be able to adjust on that. So when we did the basic salaries for all elected officials, it was a starting point in case somebody comes in with no experience. The commission wanted some latitude that to afterwards to be able to look at the years of service and what, you know, the experience that the person has, whether it's in county or outside the county, be able to have some of that to refer to. You're absolutely right. You stepped up, and you came in right at that time you were appointed, after you decided you were going to try the private sector, but then it became open and you came back. And it's been a tenure. And you decided, you know, it was agreed upon, you'd wait until the election before, you know, you accepted the salary of what the state's attorney was at that time. I look at these numbers and do I think you could make one hundred and seventy-seven in the private sector? Absolutely, you could. I do believe a person needs to make more than the person underneath them when they're the same experience, same type of stuff. You took the challenge to run for the state's attorney, and it doesn't pay great. You could have stayed, you know, a person could have stayed at the state's attorney's office, the chief deputy or any other county employee could stay where they're at and be fine. So it takes, it's not a big jump when you're talking one fifty-five to one fifty-eight to three forty. It's really not. I do believe, you know, when we did do some of those other elected officials positions, the recommendation from HR wasn't followed, you know, and I do remember that very well. So I think, you know, I'm a little bit of a struggle, too. When I was hearing some numbers till I looked over these and that Carol provided, and I see the highs and I see the lows, and absolutely, I struggle with that. You know, I'm kind of with Deb, with the one seventy-seven, two seventeen's hard for me to swallow, and I think it's hard for the public to swallow, too, given where we're at. The one fifty-eight, three forty is above what we're yet, you started at and above your chief deputy, not by much, but it puts you above there a little bit more. So I'm going to hear most of it, but I respect your courage for coming forward in a public forum like this to have these discussions, both of you, so.
Chairman.
That's where I'm at with this. We have no motion on the floors, but if there's any more questions, Ms. Hancock.
So I kept the numbers that was elected officials and chief deputies that was sent out. So in 2022, Jay was making one fifteen, eight, four, two, eighty, twenty-three, then that's when he got a ten thousand dollar raise, one twenty-five, six, eight, six, with his experience and how long he's been in his position of twenty-seven years as well. Twenty-four, he had one thirty-one, two, and then twenty-five, one thirty-four, five, which is a nineteen thousand dollar raise since 2022. So those numbers from an experienced person that's been in, doing the same job description, I would say as Laura Retschel. Now, as a leader, again, do I think she should make more than her chief deputy state's attorney? Yes, I think she should. Now she's become the leader, it's more responsibilities. We already know when we give more responsibilities, then the pay should increase. So I understand that part. Now, I'll keep just saying, I think this needs to continue for more discussion, because I don't think we have a real number at this point. The one fifty-eight, you came up with kind of a, trying to figure out, Ms. Carol, but I think the board is struggling, and so am I, where that number should be. So I'd like to see, again, more comparables and benefits and all those packages together so we're make sure, number one, we treat State's Attorney Retschel fairly, as we say, but also in a competitive manner where she feels like she's appreciated as well by that number, and also comfortable from a board standpoint and Laura Retschel, state's attorney, to figure out that number. And like I said, I think by comparables and market analysis or just looking at other areas that we can find that, that finished number. I don't think today that's going to happen with a one seventy-seven, one fifty-eight disparity in there. And again, I appreciate Laura, and you're correct, and I'll rescind what I said because I thought and didn't think that you just got elected in November. I thought it was June, thinking, you know, at that point, you knew you were going to be part of the process. So on your budget process, again, is that's kind of given me a little bit of hesitant as well as how much that's going to affect it. You also know by the absorbing of eleven million, six hundred and forty-seven thousand, I'm not into looking into absorbing. I would ask you that you do not absorb it, that you cut, if that is your intention, is to raise your salary, is to cut somewhere where you can actually put that in your budget instead of absorb it at this point? Because just from the standpoint of the discretion of the last three years of absorbing stuff into budgets which haven't been changed in the public eye is not going to be, I think, essential for moving forward. Thank you.
I'm going to make a motion, and I'll explain it afterwards. I'd make the motion to increase the twenty-two-five annual salary for State's Attorney Laura Retschel to one, a hundred and sixty-four thousand effective January fifth, 2025. If I get a second, I'll give an explanation.
I want a second for a discussion.
It's motion by La Croix, seconded by Drews. I'm looking at Lincoln County. I think the job descriptions are similar to Pennington County, and that's where I'm looking at. And it's not up there to the highest, but it's not the lowest either. But I think it gives some room to give some more work, if, you know, to see some more improvements. That's why I made the motion as I did.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, I got Mr. Laster, then I'll come back to you, Ron.
Carol, I just have a question, and kind of goes into what Commissioner Hancock was just talking about, not being able to do this without seeing some more comparisons. But my question is, on these comparables, do you take the job descriptions and compare them as well, or are we just looking straight across the board at pay? And then if we are just looking at pay, how do we get a better view without looking at job descriptions? So for example, you know, the sheriff, and I only remember this because of the sheriffs, you know, because it's written in state statute, if they're the sheriff, and then if they run a jail, they get an extra payout because they're running a jail as well. So is there something, is it all comparable through their job description, or is that a piece of this that we don't have? Because I didn't see that in the package that was presented so that we could understand.
It's an excellent question. The job descriptions are very similar across the state's attorney positions. Where the variance comes in is what Laura did explain, as far as like how many cases they have, how many employees they supervise, et cetera. That's not going to be in the job description. So I would also like to point out that my concern would be, if the recommendation is not followed, is that our sheriff, is that a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty? The base for both of those positions is a hundred and thirty-five thousand. The sheriff, in his own right, has come up through the ranks, much like what Laura described within her field. And so this is saying at a hundred and sixty-four thousand that that would be compensating our state's attorney position at a greater rate than what we are sheriff, and that concerns me.
Here.
Mr. Laster, you done?
Oh, I'm sorry. Roskinck is next.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Didn't you have Ron?
Oh, yeah, I got to go, Ron.
Ron first, yes.
Ron Roskinck.
Mr. Chair, I guess, you know, as I said, I was kind of torn. I think the one fifty-eight, it's a little on the low side, the one seventy-seven, thinking about taxpayers, if you took the average, that'd be one sixty-seven, five, or roughly a seventeen percent increase. So I'm in line with your, you know, I'm just saying that I can support your motion of one sixty-four today's meeting.
Okay, you done? Ms. Hancock.
I'm going to agree.
Yep, I'm done.
I'm going to agree with HR Director Carol Bancroft. And why I say that is, you're talking four hundred and fifty employees that a sheriff has, and you're doing a comparable, and you're saying that you are comparable to him with four hundred and fifty employees he has with three buildings, maybe four hundred and fifty employees he has with three buildings, maybe more buildings. I don't think that's justification for a raise by, by comparing a sheriff to a state's attorney. The average of what we're paid here at Pennington County, I'll disagree, I'll agree again, that I did not agree with all those averages for that reason, because private sector is different than, than us. I did agree, I'll just say, that the sheriff needed to be paid that because when I looked into it as well, it had the benefits and everything into it. Today, we are guessing at a hundred and sixty-four because we are just going to say that the state's attorney from Lincoln County, well, if we're going to do that, I looked it up and the sheriff from Lincoln County in Sioux Falls, I think they're at a hundred and seventy-eight, aren't they, Carol? Something like that.
I believe Minnehaha County, and don't quote me on this, but I think it's more like a hundred and ninety thousand.
Yes. So just to throw a county out there and say, that sounds like a good county, that's bad business, is what it is. I know you're not trying to make it sound that way because you really want to make a difference and show Ms. Retschel that you care about her position. But do it the right way. Have Carol come back with the comparables, show the benefits of the different counties, and come up with a number if you feel it's a hundred and fifty-eight and that's, it should be a little bit higher, by showing the public why we did it, not because we just guessed, because Lincoln County looks like a good county to, to adjust our, our state's attorney to. And Carol, again, made a good point. We just don't say a hundred and sixty-four because then what you've just started is a new issue in Pennington County with compression and disparities. So I don't think we want to start the new year that way. We want to do it right. We want to make sure she's paid what she's, what she should be paid, but I'd like to see that, and so would I believe the public on why we came up with that comparable market analysis and why we believe at that point, if it's a hundred and fifty-eight or even a hundred and seventy-seven at that point, why we made that decision.
Thank you. You know, in listening to the comments from this commission, I would amend, make, amend my motion to the one fifty-eight, three forty, as a reason, it's justified from HR and with line with the sheriffs, if that's okay with the secondor. So, no?
Yeah, I'll second it.
So the secondor is okay with amending it to one fifty-eight, three forty. At this point in time, we've had a lot of discussion, so I think what we need to do is probably go to a roll call.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on, Mr. Drews.
I was just going to make a motion.
So, I'm not, I'm not overly comfortable with this number. I was, I was more in line with something in addition to this. So I think what my vote is going to be is a no vote on this, so that we can have further discussion on it.
Chair was just going to make another substitute motion, not discussion. Motion to continue to the January seventh meeting so Carol can come back with comparables, market analysis, and also benefits of other counties in the region, to come up with a number that's fair and just for state's attorney Retschel.
Second.
Some motions been made. Can I ask for additional information? Since it was, the two were very comparable, the sheriffs and, and state's attorney, so I, I would recommend having both.
Um, that would be up to HR Director Bancroft because she would know, that's what she does for a living, and I'm going to trust that she doesn't do a comparable on a sheriff to a state's attorney. I mean, that's your decision, Ms. Bancroft, but.
No, no, no. But originally, they, with the county, they've both been the same. One thirty-five, one thirty. So I, that's why I'm saying, you probably need some of that information because part of our decision on the last time when we did them was, they were both right at one thirty-five.
Okay.
So it'd be good to show you guys and the new ones that there isn't a stretch. One's taken up more than the other.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Laster.
Yeah, and I second it again. This is very challenging. We've got, we got a couple of different things we have to factor in. Skill sets, and we want to make sure we're getting the right one because we don't want to set ourselves up for just looking at one particular county or another, and then, I don't want to say we're shotgunning, but we're, you know, we're trying to get what's right for, for Laura. But what if it comes out to be one ninety? I, I think, I think you've got to get all the information to make the right decision rather than trying to say, well, we think it's one fifty-six, add a couple of thousand dollars because of this, because it's higher than the sheriff, or it's a hundred and sixty-four because of, well, we think she needs more, but maybe not one seventy-seven. I think there's enough question in that, that we do need to have it evaluated and evaluate it hard, and then we can make an informed decision. So that's why I seconded the continuation, specifically because I think we need to have the hard numbers to move it forward.
Okay, we do have a motion to continue to the January, trying to look at my calendar.
Seventh.
January seventh meeting?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussions? Any public comment on this? Hearing none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we get, we do have to do a roll call, but we have one opposed, so could you do a roll call, please?
Sure. Hickok? Aye. Ross Connect?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
Lassiter?
Aye.
La Croix?
Aye. So motion carries with a four to one vote to continue to the January seventh meeting. Thank you, folks. Is there another motion on this one?
Mr. Chair, I don't know if that applies at this moment in time because it's already been accepted at the current status, and since that's not been changed, I don't think that applies.
So that's going to take us right into Compensation Committee.
Yes. Carol Bancroft, HR Director, on behalf of the Compensation Committee. And so I have before you today the compensation policy revisions for policy three dot eighteen, and this is to make sure that the new compensation administration policy follows along with the 2025 wage scale and implementation of that, as the current policy makes multiple references to the DBM ratings. So the, the notable updates within this policy is that it does follow along with the current policy, that it has a continuation of up to step twelve, based on verifiable experience, to improve the hiring competitiveness with the flexibility of new hires. It also has the same structured promotions and transfers, giving empowerment to the supervisors, but knowing and understanding that any compensation changes is submitted to the HR Director for review and approval, and then to the Auditor's Office for audit to make sure that we are being consistent. And then one of the, the bigger changes is fairness in demotions, that the pay adjustments aligned with the employee responsibilities and previous classifications. The current policy says that they, there's a percentage that they can be reduced to, which sometimes it falls even lower than what that percentage was. And so it's making sure that if they are going to a lower position, that it is adjusted to whatever that pay grade is. And then the other big one is the recognition through time of service bonuses for anyone who is retiring, to recognize the employee loyalty and longevity. The current policy, because of how that payout occurs, actually compromises them that they lose that one year and do not get it. And so, again, these revisions are to mirror the, the new wage scale, and so it is eliminating any references to DBM, DBM ratings that is in the current policy. So the motion could read, move to approve the revisions to policy three dot eighteen, Compensation Administration, effective December twenty-second, 2024.
Is there any questions for Carol? This is the second time it's come to us with this information two weeks ago.
Correct.
If there's no questions, I would go to the commission for a vote, our motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd make that motion, and Carol will just.
Moved by Drews, seconded by La Croix. Is there any discussion?
Chairman.
Ms. Hickok.
I'm not against all the policies on here. I think they've worked very hard, the Compensation Committee, on some of this, but the twelve steps and the twelve scale, I have some discretion on, so, meaning I'm not really thinking that's okay at this point, just from what I've seen from the scale and, and how much we have changed it. So, again, I'll probably be voting no on this, well, I know I'm voting no on this, just because of some of the policies I don't agree with. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I would go to, is there any comments from the public? None? I'd go to a roll call, please.
Hickok? No. Ross Connect?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
Lassiter?
No.
La Croix?
Aye. Motion carries three to two.
Thank you.
Next, that brings us up to items from the public. I have no speaker request forms, but during this time, a speaker request form is required, a time for the members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the Board of Commissioners on Policies and Issues Affecting County Government and its Function. Action will not be taken during this section, and any issue brought forward that are not properly noticed. Speakers under this section will be recorded in the minutes by name of interest. We have none. What else? So we'll go to, next item is item fifteen, second reading and final hearing of ordinance one thirty-seven.
Chair.
I'll recognize Brittany Molter.
Can we have a break?
Well, right after.
After this.
Okay, sorry. Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molter, Planning Director. This item is to repeal ordinance one thirty-seven, the minimum standards for the regulation of tattooing and body piercing. This is the second reading. The reason for the repeal is that Pennington County does not have authority under SDCL nine thirty-four seventeen, or the South Carolina Administrative Rules forty-four, twelve, zero, one, thirty-five, to inspect and/or regulate tattoo and piercing establishments. So staff is requesting to repeal ordinance one thirty-seven to reflect the same.
That'd be my motion.
Second.
Moved by Hickok, seconded by Laster. Any public comment? Seeing none, any further comments from the commission? Seeing none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next, thank you, Brittany. I'd suggest taking a ten to fifteen minute break till planning can set up.
Move to recess for fifteen minutes.
Second.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Hickok. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, motion carries. Opposed, motion carries. The commission utilizes speaker request forms. If you'd like to speak on an item, please complete a speaker request form located at the bookshelves in the back of the chambers, returning to Commission Manager Holly Hennies, located at the lower right side of the dais. At this time, we are going to go, go into, I'd look for a motion to go into the Board of Adjustments.
Remove.
Moved by Lassiter, seconded by Drews. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Good morning. Megan Talmadge, Planner. Agenda item A is variance COVA twenty-four dash zero, zero, one, two, and is to reduce the setback from twenty-five feet to twelve feet to the eastern lot line for an existing accessory structure. The applicant is Lucille Sanvin. The surveyor on this project is Jeff Howe. This is located at twelve seventy-four, eight Old Hill City Road in rural residential district. There's no flood hazard on this property. The applicant is, is requesting to bring an existing detached garage into compliance. The garage was built in somewhere between two thousand and one, two thousand and two, per Department of Equalization. And during a site visit, there are multiple unpermitted structures on this property. Those structures will have to be brought into compliance, just like this one. This one, we can't take in a building permit until this is approved, but I did talk with the applicant yesterday about bringing in either removal permits or building permits for the rest of those. I let him know kind of the timeline that we're on. So, but because there is no special, there is no special condition on this property that would warrant granting a variance, staff still recommends denial.
Thanks, Megan. Did the property owners own it back in two thousand, two thousand and one? Or did they buy it with the, already like that?
I do believe that they owned it back then, but I'm not one hundred percent sure on that.
Okay. Isn't Daniel or Lucille here?
Um, I had an email conversation yesterday where I was asked the time and location of the meeting. I did expect someone to come by for this item, but it doesn't seem like there's someone
Board have any questions for Megan?
So Megan, no building permits on, on any of these?
The house has a building permit, but there's another issue with the house that we'll see later in the meeting, that it was built within a private right of way, which will, they have also applied to vacate that, but no other structures on this property have building permits.
And how many structures are there?
Um, at the moment, from our previous conversation, there are three that still need permits.
I kind of struggle with these out, out in this area because sometimes, as you can see, it's a very wooded lot, and sometimes you, what kind of structures were built now? Because we're talking the house also, but what are some of the other structures?
So this particular request is for a garage. The other structures are carports, sheds. I think equalization has, has one of them listed as a tool shed and the rest as carports.
So this is kind of, the carports, the person could move or adjust, but like with a garage, he's trying to get into compliance now?
Yes. They're selling the property, and then when the survey came back, they noticed the violations. They came in to us and they asked, what do we do at this point? So we're trying to get them through that process.
So they can be compliant for the sale?
Yes.
Chair. If they were houses or something, that might be a little bit different than a carport and shed, because I know a lot of people think a carport and a shed, you can just put one up because it's not that big, or it's not going to really affect anything. I've had people, even in the city, that have done it, or came back, said, did I need a building permit? And I go, depending on the size, you need to go look. So for the garage, they are getting a permit, you said?
If this is approved, they will come in for a permit.
And tell me again, is it, is it built, Ms. Megan, the garage yet? Or is this just a permit to build it?
It wa, it's existing since two thousand and one.
Okay. Two thousand and one, two thousand and two, right? And is there any neighbors or anybody that are complaining that it's, you know, in their space, or it's too close to anything, or?
I haven't received any complaints or concerns.
Okay. Thank you. And then after this, today, they should be in compliance because they'll come back for their building permits. The garage will get the setback, and then they'll be moving forward?
Yep. The first condition does say that within sixty days, the applicant obtained building permits or removal permits for all unpermitted structures.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I would, I'd make a motion to approve COVA twenty-four dash zero, zero, one, two, with the two conditions.
Second.
Moved by La Croix, seconded by Hickok. Any other comment?
So, Megan, so what's listed on our sheet as a shed is the garage, though. The building. So, what's listed on our sheet as a shed is the garage, though, the building closest to the house.
Yes. I'm not exactly sure why they're labeling it as a shed. If you view a photo of it, it does look like a, it looks like a garage and it looks like it's being utilized as a garage. So, the label or in the, in the staff report, I did call it a detached accessory structure or detached garage accessory structure. That fits that criteria.
I, I made the motion because I feel that at this point in time, that the residents are trying to get everything in, in order, in order, so the next person comes in doesn't, would have to do the same thing or could hinder the sale. I think it's the right thing to, usually this is when it happens. You have to do the survey and then all of a sudden you find out things weren't done right, so you have to do it in order. And they'll be getting the application fees and so forth.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. You got the next one, too, Megan?
Yep. Agenda item B is on the same property and it is to reduce the, or variance COVA twenty-four dash zero-zero-one-three is to reduce the setback from twenty-five feet to twenty-one feet for, to the southern lot line for an existing single-family residence. This one is same situation. The residence does have a building permit on it that lists it as twenty-five feet away from the property line. There was also a previous survey that had it in that location, but with this survey that came back, it's that twenty-one point nine feet away from the property line.
I'll move approval.
So, I have a motion to approve this COVA twenty-four dash zero-zero-one-two with two conditions, correct?
Yes, sir.
And I'll second that. Any further discussion?
What's your reasoning, Deb?
What's your what?
What's your reasoning?
Um, because the survey was at twenty-five feet. At the time when they were building this, they probably thought it was twenty-five feet and it's now twenty-one. So, based on that, I believe that they were doing it in good faith. Thank you, Kara.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Thanks, Megan. Cody, you got the easy ones?
Uh, I don't like to use the word easy. Uh, so Cody Sack, Senior Planner. Agenda C is variance COVA twenty-four dash zero-zero-one-four is to exceed the maximum height requirement of thirty-five feet for a water tower on the subject property. The applicant and agent is Southern Black Hills Water System, Don Peterson. I do believe that there is a representative for Southern Black Hills Water System in the audience if there's any questions. The landowner is Jack and Penny Dye. Location of the property is one-four-three-zero-four Dauphin Bar Road. Current zoning is agriculture district with an existing land use of residential. Access is off Dauphin Bar Road and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Now, when reviewing variances, staff takes a two-pronged approach. Prong number one, whether granting a variance runs counter to public interest. And prong number two, whether a special condition exists to grant a variance. It does appear that the variance would not run, does not run counter to public interest. A water tower by its very nature is there to serve members of the rural community, so it'd actually benefit the public. And for the special condition, the only zoning ordinance or zoning that allows a structure over thirty-five feet is industrial zoning, so therefore they'd have to put that water tower six miles away from where it's needed. This was read around for interdepartmental review and there were no objections or concerns that were received. Again, the applicant is requesting to construct a hundred and forty-six-foot-tall water tower on the subject property. The water tower will be used to help store and distribute water for Southern Black Hills Water System, which would help with domestic use and fire protection. So, with that, staff is recommending approval of variance COVA twenty-four dash zero-zero-one-four with conditions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Did you say it was a hundred and sixty-five feet tall?
Hundred and forty-six.
Hundred and forty-six. And is that just so it can have pressure because it's where it's at?
I believe so. From my understanding of a water tower, the height helps with storage and then it helps maintain that pressure throughout the system. So, by water towers of very nature, they have to be taller than thirty-five feet.
Gotcha.
I'll move approval with the conditions.
Second.
Motion made by Hickok, seconded by Laster to approve with the two conditions. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Item D.
Uh, item D is variance COVA twenty-four dash zero-fifteen. It's to reduce the setback to a section line from fifty-eight feet to thirty-three feet in order to build a structure on the subject property. The applicant and landowner is Tom and Michelle Scog. Location of the property is near the intersection of Nemo Road and Westbury Hills Road. Involved six point one-two acres. Current zoning is agriculture district with an existing land use of vacant. Access is off South Canyon Road and there is a hundred-year flood plan on the property. So, again, we take a two-pronged approach when looking at variances. Prong number one, whether granting the variance runs counter to public interest. It does not appear that this would run counter to public interest. The purpose of the fifty-eight-foot setback is so if the section line was ever developed, you have the thirty-three feet and then the twenty-five-foot required front yard setback. Due to topography in that area and with that property bordering Forest Service, it's very unlikely that that section line would ever be developed. Staff did perform a site visit and did find that there is topography issues on the property. So, for prong number two, whether a special condition exists to grant the variance, if you required the fifty-eight-foot setback, it would drastically reduce where a structure could be built. You have a, a big hill on the backside and then a big drop-off to the west towards the road. So, pushing it closer to that section line would definitely benefit the applicants. This was read around for interdepartmental review. The highway department says that an approach permit needs to be filed. Those concerns would be addressed at the building permit process, and there's no other objections or concerns that were received. Again, staff did perform a site visit and there are some topography due limit the buildable area on the subject property. So, with that, staff is recommending approval of variance COVA twenty-four dash zero-zero-one-five with conditions.
Any questions for Cody?
Nope. Chair.
Ms. Hickok.
I agree because of topography in the area for this variance that I'm in agreement with the two conditions on this various, variance with approval.
So, now that you spoke, you want to make a motion?
Oh, I thought I was going to make the motion. That's why I said chair.
Was that the motion you approved?
Yes, approved.
With the conditions?
Because of the topography, Kara was asking, there's topography issues at this point, so that's why they need the variance.
So, I have a motion to approve with the two conditions, seconded by Laster. Any further discussion?
Okay.
Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Cody. Oh, you're waiting for after we, okay. I'd look for a motion to adjourn from the Board of Adjustments and reconvene as the Board of Commissioners.
Remove.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Laster. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Now, we come to the consent agenda.
Uh, so again, Cody Sack, Senior Planner. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-conversal, controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and one vote by the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The planning and zoning consent agenda contains the following items. Seventeen A is Major Planning and Development Overlay Amendment Review, PUR nineteen oh nine. Donna Hartshorn. It's to review an existing planning and development overlay, and Planning Commission recommends approval of Major Planning and Development Review nineteen oh nine with twenty-five conditions. And seventeen B, Major Planning and Development Overlay Amendment Review, PUR twenty-three dash zero-two for Katie Semrenova and Brett Wallfish, to review an existing planning and development overlay to allow a specialty resort. Planning Commission recommends approval of Major Planning and Development Review twenty-three dash zero-two with twenty-five conditions.
Thanks, Cody. At this time, are there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the planning consent agenda? Seeing none. At this time, is there any commissioner who wishes to remove any item from the planning consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none. I'd come to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the planning consent agenda as presented.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Next, we come up to uncontested hearings. The following planning and zoning matters in our uncontested hearings are those which the planning department has not received or provided comment contesting the item. The documents for each item have been reviewed by the commissioners and decisions during these hearings will be made based on information provided in the packet and the short presentation. If we receive comment contesting the item, the matter, the matter will be addressed in the same manner as a contested hearing. Cody?
Cody Sack, Senior Planner. Item eighteen A is preliminary plan COPPL twenty-four dash zero-one-three. It's to create rudd tract revised and slim track subdivision. The applicant and landowners are Lyle and Melinda Powell, and I do believe they are in the audience if there's any questions. And then the other landowners, Spencer and Shelby Steffen. Surveyor is Renner Associates. Location of the property is one-four-three-nine-seven Dauphin Bar Road. Current zoning district is agriculture district, existing land use is residential, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. So, what the applicants are proposing, the current property line, you'll see in blue, is this, is this right here. They're moving it nineteen feet to the north. I believe that there was a previous survey done when this was surveyed, like five years ago, I believe, four or five years ago, that was done incorrectly. So, the applicants are fixing that by moving this lot line, like I said, I believe it's nineteen feet to the north. Staff hasn't received any comments or concerns regarding the request, so staff is recommending approval of preliminary plan COPPL twenty-four dash zero-zero-one-three with conditions with the planning commission's concurrence.
So, any further questions for Cody? Any comments from the applicants? Any from the commish? I'd look to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to approve preliminary plan CO, COPPL twenty-four dash zero-zero-thirteen with six conditions.
I have a motion.
Second.
A second from Hickok. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Brings us up to item B.
Morning, Commissioners. Jason Thonison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda items eighteen B and C regarding the same property, if you'd like to discuss them together.
Commission, okay, with suspended normal operations, discuss items B and C together?
Yes.
Yep.
Moved by Hickok, seconded by Laster. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. So, what, just for the public still, we'll discuss both of them, but vote on them individually.
All right, sir. Agenda item eighteen B is comprehensive plan amendment COCA twenty-four dash zero-zero-one-zero, and eighteen C is rezone CORZ twenty-four dash zero-zero-zero-eight to amend the comprehensive plan and rezone from planned unit development district to commercial district. The applicant is The Storage Place Incorporated. Chris Hamm is the agent. Surveyor is Advanced Design Engineering and Surveying. Location of the property is seven-four-zero-one Dunsmore Road. It is eleven point zero-six acres. Currently zoned planned unit development. Access is off Dunsmore Road. There's no special flood hazard area on the property. When staff receives these requests, we do analyze current zoning within one-half mile of the subject property. As you can see on the left-hand side of the screen, there is highway service in red, which is what we key in on because they're requesting commercial. We also look at future land use, which is on the right. Again, you can see the red for highway service, which is essentially commercial. Little history on the property. When this PUD was first established, it did contain three different zones, which you can see on the screen highlighted in red. Current property now is highlighted in green. What's happened here is that the city of Rapid City has essentially annexed the remaining portion of this PUD into their city limits. So, with that, it was originally approved for a mixed-use development. Now, there's only one use on the property remaining, which is storage units, so it doesn't really meet the definition of a PUD anymore. So, they're in here to request commercial zoning, which will also require a conditional use permit on the property, and they've also requested that it was continued from the last planning commission meeting until this rezone goes into effect. Uh, with that, the request was now for interdepartmental review. There were no objections or concerns received. Yeah, with that, staff recommends approval of comprehensive plan amendment COCA twenty-four dash zero-zero-one-zero and rezone CORZ twenty-four dash zero-zero-zero-eight.
Thanks, Cody.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
I just, I was on the planning and zoning when this one came through. There wasn't a lot of major issues or concerns with it, and it passed, if I remember correctly unanimously. So, correct.
This, my question was going to be, our statement was going to be that this was brought, brought on because the city's annexation is why the changing needs to be, it wasn't something that the owner had done, correct?
Uh, I believe that the owner requested that it be annexed into the city.
Yeah.
But yes.
But the annexation, yeah.
Correct.
Chair.
Hickok.
Move approval of comprehensive plan to change the future land use from planned unit development district to commercial district in accordance with Pennington County's zoning ordinance.
Second.
COCA twenty-four dash zero-zero-one-zero. Storage, please.
My motion was different. It's to approve comprehensive plan amendment COCA twenty-four zero-zero-one-zero?
Correct.
That's what your motion was?
Yep.
Yep, and seconded by Laster. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Now, the second item C is here. Mr. Laster.
To, my motion to approve rezone CORZ twenty-four dash zero-zero-zero-eight?
Second.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Hickok. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Now, we come to contested hearings and it looks like we have Megan back up.
Hi.
Megan again.
Megan Talmadge, Planner. Agenda item J is vacation of plat, COVPL twenty-four dash zero-zero-zero-seven and is to vacate a platted private right-of-way located on the subject properties. This is located in Wolfremite Estates. It concerns three properties, all rural residential. There's no flood hazard in the, or on the properties. This request is partially on the same property that we had addressed earlier. They, since the house also lies within that private right-of-way, they would need to vacate, they will need to vacate that as well. The right-of-way was never improved as a roadway, and all other lots have access either off of Old Hill City Road or Wolfremite. Along with, staff hasn't received any comments from utility companies, but staff recommends approval with two conditions. Condition number one does address that the exhibit needs to be updated. The exhibit has been updated to show proper legal descriptions.
Any questions for Megan?
I'd move approval. Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Laster for approval of defecation plat COVPL twenty-four dash zero-zero-zero-seven with two conditions. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Megan. Next, this brings up items from commission manager, and I'll recognize Ms. Holahines.
All right, commissioners, in front of you for consideration today is a resolution establishing the administrative cost fee to be collected by Pennington County for the implementation of a tax increment financing district. This is in response to the law change that was passed in this last year's legislature. The fee is being proposed at fifteen thousand dollars. This was calculated based on the amount of time that various different county departments are involved with the administration of a fee. We all know that they can be upwards of fifteen, twenty years. So the, that's where the, the dollar amount was calculated from. County has more involvement when it's a county TIF than it is a city TIF, however, also kind of all balances out in the end. So this resolution has been blessed by Toby Morris. We ran it by him to make sure the language was good, and so I'll stand for any questions the board may have.
Chair.
Auditor Cindy Muller was also supportive of this in that the fee would be required to be paid within the first ninety days. That FOIA, it can be recorded once and accounted for once instead of multiple over multiple years.
Okay. Ms. Hagcock.
Thank you. I think this is a good resolution. I would ask that, maybe it's the number of years it takes, like a thousand dollars a year, so if it's fifteen years, it's fifteen. If it's twenty years, it's twenty, meaning twenty thousand because of the extra work, because most of them, I think from the city, if I'm correct, Holly, are twenty thousand. Last I heard, it was twenty thousand.
City's fees is twenty thousand, and they are actually going through and working on theirs, and that dollar amount very well may change.
Okay, and I'm not opposed to twenty thousand on it because there's a lot of work that is put into this, and if it's twenty years, that's why I said, I'm just, on the fifteen, twenty years, that's where I'm stuck, where, okay, I get it fifteen thousand for fifteen years, but how about, yeah, so I wouldn't be opposed to raising it to twenty thousand because the city, I haven't had anybody bulk over the city's twenty thousand at this point, and the county does a lot of work, plus there's a lot of impact to our county as well. I don't know if you're opposed to that, Holly, or not, but I would like to match the same as the city's at this time.
My, my thought process is it not tied to the years because most of the TIFs that I've, I've seen have been twenty, planned out for twen, they make that plan twenty to thirty years, you know what I'm saying? But the work is the same, and I didn't realize how much work even our IT department does on these. It's just trying to get the numbers. They get a lot of that preliminary work done by the county before they even apply. So I'm not opposed to the twenty either, but I'd like to hear how they got to the fifteen.
So could we use, if we decided that South Dakota equal to the number of years that the TIF is in, is retroactive?
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I'm not necessarily addressing what Commissioner Hagcock is saying there, but in working on this, I think we came to a determination that basically the fifteen thousand gets the county back its, its cost for these TIFs, no matter what the term, no matter what the length of it is, or at least it balances out for that. Some of these TIFs start at twenty years and then are shortened up to fourteen, fifteen years just because the, the money has come in. So I relied a little bit more on what Toby Morris had to say, you know, because we're, we're moving this up to, to being paid within that ninety days, first ninety days, and Toby's response to that was, is that he felt the ninety days was, was more than sufficient. He said, also, it will hopefully help deter developers who just want to create a TIF. If they can't come up with the fifteen thousand, they shouldn't be developing, was his, was his comment, which I, I think is correct. I'm not exactly sure how we would do that to, to make, to adjust it to the years, you know, adjusting a dollar amount. I'm not opposed to, to adjusting the dollar amount, I'm just not sure exactly how we go about doing that.
Mr. Chair, I have a follow-up question.
Mr. Laster.
And, Mr. Drews, you were talking about this fifteen thousand. Do we, do we have entities that are getting a TIF and not moving forward with development? You, you mentioned that it kind of would dissuade someone from trying, working to get a TIF and then not do development, or do we have a lot of those happening? Unless I heard you wrong.
Say that again, I'm not sure.
I thought you said something to the effect of having the fifteen thousand dollar fee also prevents someone who, trying to establish a TIF and maybe not falling through with, with the building or the development or whatever the case may be. Is that correct?
Correct.
Do we have a lot of those?
I don't think there, for us locally, I don't think that there is, but obviously, I mean, Toby works throughout the state on these. Obviously, he's experienced this in other areas, and he's just saying, here's kind of a, a way of, you know, cutting that short, so you aren't dealing with those types of issues.
Okay.
I, I can answer one of those. I remember one for sure that I was a part of listening to a while back, you know, probably six, seven years ago, that didn't follow through, and I think after hearing that, I, I liked that, that clause in there for the simple fact that, you know, we get people that come to the commission wanting all this information to, in order to get ready for it and so forth. That takes our time and, and services to get, you know, and so if they're serious about it, I think that that's part of it.
Chair. Just a question. So when do they pay that? Do they pay it upfront?
Ninety days.
So that's why I'm saying that that might be a little bit more of a, like if it was carried on and we knew it was going to carry on a certain amount, the years might work a little bit better, but you guys are right, so you probably just want that whatever upfront. I'm not going to die on twenty thousand or whatever, but I was just wondering your reasoning and why the city had it at twenty, so.
I, I would probably recommend approving this today, and it could be changed in the future if needed.
If it becomes different.
Yeah, if something, once the city figures out theirs, we could, this could come back to the commission and change.
I agree.
So I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinet.
I will go ahead and make that motion today. Move to approve the resolution establish, establishing the administrative cost fee to be collected by Pennington County for the implementation of a tax increment financing district.
Moved by Roskinet.
Second.
Seconded by Hagcock. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Holly. Next, we have item twenty-one, United States Department of Agriculture. I'll, I'll give the floor to Commissioner Laster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, this was brought to me from RCAF. I was at a meeting, and they've sent it out to several of the counties. From what I understand, several counties have already adopted this particular one. I changed it a little bit specifically from, from my personal opinion. The original one was opposed to EID livestock tags. I'm not opposed to EID livestock tags, however, I am opposed to mandatory EID livestock tags, and, and that's what the premise of this particular resolution is. It's still in line with the other resolutions that I've seen out there, it's just adding the word mandatory. There's some producers in the, in the, in the county that utilize the EID tags, and they obviously don't want to be pre-vented from using it, but I think the rule that was established that mandates it for, for the sexually intact beef cattle and bison over eighteen months old is a problem. Small producers, and, and I'll categorize myself as a small producer, I have about twelve or less head of cattle a year on my property. There's many others that do the same thing that I do, but if you, if you're unaware of the cost, just that EID reader, depending on the one you get versus, along with the particular tags, you're talking anywhere between a fifteen hundred dollar to six thousand dollar investment just for the reader if you're wanting it at your place. So this is probably, in my opinion, an undue burden as a mandatory aspect for small ranchers in, in that aspect, and I think the county should at least say, we don't want mandatory EID tags, but it still leaves the door open for anybody who wants to, to have them, to have them and utilize them for their herds.
Thank you. Mr. Drews.
So last night, I had a conversation with Eric Jennings, who's the, I believe, the immediate past president of the South Dakota Cattlemen's Association, and Eric said he feels that there's just been a lot of misinformation relative to the electronic tagging, and he indicated that his association supports the electronic tagging, figures it'll bring efficiency in, doesn't provide any additional information. He said, one of the things that people have been talking about is that it gathers more information than the old ear tags did, and, and he said, that's just not true, it doesn't. So he was supporting, supportive of it. In addition, he said, do you realize this is already passed? It's in law, it went into effect, I think he said November first, but in November.
November fifth.
Pardon me?
It goes into effect, it was a pass back in April, I think, and it went to effect November fifth.
Okay, November fifth. So I guess my question more is not so much whether we support or don't support on the resolution, but do we really, as a county commission, even want to be on record as, in voting on this?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Mr. Chair, there's been times that this commission has taken a stance on a particular topic, whether we support or not support something that's either being moved by the Forest Service or the feds, one way or the other. Pennington County, the whole eastern side of Pennington County is a ranching area, and I think the ranchers and the public need to know where we stand. Even though it's already been enacted, there's always movement to try to change that action and get the, the message clear to Washington, how the locals feel about how it's impacting them, whether it's financial or whether it's even appropriate, and so I think it doesn't harm us to do that, it actually shows that we support our ranchers in Pennington County. And again, I'm purely against, I don't care if someone has EID tags, if a rancher wants to, that's fine. I'm against the mandatory requirement of it, because right now, and I'm just going to use my, my herd as an example, and mine's not the only one that's in this, right now, depending on what I do with my makeup of my herd, at a minimum, I have to go buy the reader, and I have to go get the tags, and that adds a significant expense above and beyond what I currently operate on, and so I'm, I'm not doing it. So I think you should support ranchers, at least the small ranchers, if they want to, they shouldn't have to, and then let this momentum carry to, to DC and let the next administration deal with it.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I just don't want producers confused as to, if, if they have breeding livestock or moving it across state lines, they're going to have to have this, and so I don't want producers thinking that this is something that's going to be able to be stopped unless there's a true effort going in to try to amend this.
Well, I think hearing from the local, you know, small governments, they, there is a movement moving for that, to mine cattle never go across the state line, so why do I have to mandate to that? Minor, minor, I have an ear tag in my animals, they have the bangs tag, and they also have a brand, so, and mine stay all in the state, so why do I have to do this if all my stuff is staying within the state?
Yeah. I hear you.
Just in listening to, that was one of my questions when you first brought this up, was, I, I remember it getting brought forward, and it was wanted quite a bit, so that's the first I, you know, I always, from, as, as you stated, from, from both the market, I could just remember Dusty's and our congress wanting to have that done, and I thought this was something that was probably hindering, wasn't thought about. I would probably recommend continuing this to the next meeting so you can get information from both sides. I, I don't know, that's, I didn't have a problem with it earlier when I'd listened to you, but I, now it's bringing up some doubts that maybe this should be something that the commission should really think before just throwing it out there.
Mr. Chair.
Oops.
Let's do it.
I, I, I agree with you. I, I think we need to have clarification on whether or not producers really need to do it. Is the mandatory in here, like Travis is saying, is he, is he mandated to have to do it? Or if he's not moving livestock across state lines, does he have to do it?
Ms. Hagcock.
I think it specifies, it says the ED tag mandate would potentially interfere with price discovery found in traditional markets, markets, the overreaching of intrusive potentially circumvents privacy laws, and the main thing that I've been hearing from, from the ag producers or people in ag is that they don't care about the EID, one way or another, if you want to do it, you should be able to do it, you shouldn't have to be mandated, and I think that's what's, this is saying. We're not against EID tags or electronic tagging, we're just saying you need to take a better look at what you're doing to the ag community by mandating or price, like Travis ends up wanting to sell is, that's six thousand dollars out of pocket that is coming out of his cattle sales, if he wants to sell twelve in Rapid, or around the surrounding area. So it's kind of like any small business or larger business, that's great that, the larger business, how it affects it, it's probably not going to make an impact, but anybody below that large impact, and you know that from any small business to a larger business, anything that you put in there and add to it takes away from their bottom line. So this actually says that on, said to interfering with price discovery, and it's also talking about tag mandate is far overreaching, and for, for me in government, overreaching is mandating the whole group without taking a good look at the impacts. I, I think it's more sending them a message from us that, look at the impacts a little bit closer. I don't think Travis or we need to do that, I think they need to do it after reading this, this resolution, and you, you know, resolution is suggestion, it's not ordinance, it's a suggestion, please look at this, basically, to see if there's any impacts that you haven't seen. So it's not saying that we don't like or do like electronics tags, it's just saying, take a closer look, please, because the small producers are having some major issues with this by their, by your mandate, and I think that's what the resolution, to me, says. So I'm not, I don't think it needs to be continued on that, it's just, it's making a statement that we do care about ag and how you're affecting how the smaller producers are affected.
I'm, I'm going to go back to a new light, I, you know, just think of our last meeting when we got, gotten some heat from not involving some other people in a resolution that was brought forward. I think, you know, if you look at our agenda, this just has the resolution, I think this should be continued to, and have the resolution and the original state law, so you can put them together and come to your own conclusion, or the federal law. They should both be on the agenda for review at the same time, is my thoughts on, on that, because I'd sure like, and then that gives another opportunity for both sides to come together, a chance to speak on it, I think. It's always never been a bad thing to continue something for, for more input.
If we could have Jerry Mater speak too, sir, he's here from the public.
Yeah, I'd deal with the commission first.
Oh, okay. Well, I just thought you didn't.
Well, I had no speaker request for him, but since he's the only one here, I was going, I was going to call him up anyhow, but, but.
And I'm not against what you're saying either, because it could always be looked at closer if you want.
Yeah, so, so Jerry, typically we have to have a speaker request form, but I think we'll make an exception for you this time.
I apologize, I can still do that if you'd like.
So you heard the discussion.
I did.
Are you opposed to continuing to get more?
No, I think that would be probably a good suggestion. I'd like to see it voted down, obviously, but I, I kind of feel like it's some government overreach, and we already have the bangs tag that has numbers that can, are pretty, pretty dependable, I guess. So I, I just, I really don't care too much for too much government, I guess maybe that's my biggest hang-up, and I feel like it's government overreach, I guess, so.
Mr. Chair.
If you have any questions.
Can you clarify what you mean, you want what voted down?
Oh, I want to support the resolution.
Okay. I heard voted down, I was like, wait a minute.
I, I apologize, I said that wrong.
Jerry and I communicated a little bit last night. It's the man. Jerry and I communicated a little bit last night. Is the mandatory is, is what you're opposed to?
Yes, exactly. Yeah. We have neighbors that have it and I'm fine. And I may end up doing it someday. I don't know. But when they, when they make it mandatory, I don't see that there's that much benefit from that. So.
Chair.
Ms. Haggard.
So, and, and say why you don't think it's benefited. And I had conversation with you as well last night and then a couple other ag producers. So benefited, um, because of why? I mean, why do they do electronic tags? And if that's a benefit, because they're, like you said last night, that it was, you already get tags. You have other tags that, that you put on, I don't know livestock stuff very well on, and you were trying to explain that you already put the tags on the ears already. Plus there's another safeguard that you also, if they think there's going to be disease or anything else, they also have for that safeguard, the tags, plus if the tags come off, you have a brand that they can trace it through.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, and Gary might be right on this. Is there, maybe Travis knows federally, do they have to do this? And if they're not, if they're not transporting, do you know, Travis, if they're not transporting, it's not mandated anymore if it's in state? Or do you know that?
I'm not sure. I don't know if it makes it clear. All the research that I've done, unless Jerry has something else on there. Everything that I read, it says covered animals. The rule applies to sexually intact cattle and bison, 18 months of age or older, dairy cattle, cattle and bison of any age. So any age used for rodeo, recreation events, shows or exhibitions. So, I mean, any age, if they're going to bring them to the fairgrounds, they've got to have this. And I know many people that bring their cattle to the fairgrounds probably don't have that. So we're, are we just setting ourselves up for saying that we agree with it and y'all have to mandately do it? So don't let any of those animals come over to the fairgrounds unless they have the mandatory tags. When you read into it, when you read into that mandate, that's just what I'm going to say. And so are we going to keep an eye and make sure that the fairgrounds says every animal that comes on there has this mandatory tag? If you don't, you don't get to put them over there. Most of those four each kids don't do that. They're not going to have that kind of money.
I, I'm again, I'm going to suggest a continuation for the simple fact. I think on our agenda and even public stuff that was presented is just this thought. And I think you need to have the law that, that we're referring to stated into the agenda along with this resolution. So that's where the public knows where, what we're talking about. That's all I'm saying. I think that's a better way to do things because you have, you have the law that you're referring to, plus your resolution of why. So we have the reference points. That's my, my opinion.
Sure. Okay. Yeah. Excuse me. I, I think the additional costs, as Commissioner Laster pointed out, that's probably a pretty big issue for a lot of producers. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, can I ask for clarification? What additional information would you like us to include in the packet?
The actual law itself, the, that they're referring to, that they have to have EPA tags.
Okay.
It's a rule. It's not a law.
Uh, the rule.
Do you want me to reach out to any other organizations, Mr. Jennings or?
Jerry, do you know, are, are different associations on opposite sides of this?
Yes, they are. I think, uh, R.CAF and, and South Dakota Stock Growers.
Stock growers are for.
Yeah, they're, they're for the resolution.
For the resolution.
You're saying that right? Yeah. And I think some of the, there's, there's a lot of different views between different cattle organizations. Uh, uh, the cow calf producers are basically the stock growers and, and R.CAF organization. Some of these others are more feedlot oriented. Uh, and so they look at, they're on the, uh, the other end of the income scale, I, I, so to speak. Uh, so they just look at it somewhat differently. And, uh, I, uh, I'm a cow calf producer. So of course I'm on that side of it. And I'm, I'm not really schooled enough to argue either side. But, uh, I think that there's a lot of imported cattle that come in and, and the, some of these other organizations make a lot of money off of that. So I almost feel like they're trying to crunch us with some of these regulations to keep us down. Uh, and you'd think we'd all be on the same page. You think we'd all want the same thing, but it, there's some division in the cattle industry. Am I making that clear without sounding, sounding too facetious?
No, you're, you're right on.
Okay. Great. I mean, that's the clarification that I think that we need to know. I mean, even if we sit here today, there was a reason why they did this outside cattle bring, uh, from another country or other stuff happening.
Yeah.
That's might've been why. That's why I asked that just the ruling in it that that's in question be placed on here also. And maybe do reach out to some of those. So they explained why they did what they did. Cause sometimes intent doesn't actually read it out, but I, I just don't think, uh, I, I personally, I, I think continued on would, would benefit gathering more information.
Yeah.
Just to the next meeting.
So our, the cow calf producers, ours is all American beef. Some of the other organizations make quite a bit of money off of imported beef. And I guess the thing to go maybe a little bit farther, uh, we're heavily regulated with the insecticides and the injections we can give to our cattle. Uh, other countries are not. They can bring them in and, and I, it, it actually puzzles me quite a bit why, uh, consumers don't protest this a little bit more. Because all that meat with all whatever contaminants other countries use, Argentina, Brazil, uh, is all mixed in with American beef that's highly regulated and supposed to be safer to eat, consume. And, uh, and the other meat is not. But there's just so much money to be made by bringing in cheap cattle from outside the country, in my view.
Okay.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry. I would make the motion to continue to the January 7th commission meeting.
I'd second that.
Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
Lassiter.
No.
La Croix.
Aye. Motion passes forward to one. Next is items from chair or commission members. This.
Item 22, sir.
Shoot. Sorry. 22, 25, 2025 legislative session. I'll give the floor to Mr. Drews.
Well, this is, uh, this is really the effort of Holly putting the information together. And, uh, this is, the suggestion is, is to, uh, provide this to, uh, the legislators and the districts, uh, throughout the Black Hills. I think, uh, districts 29 through 35. And, uh, just to make them aware of, uh, what it talks about is some of the things that actually took place in 24, some of the things that were, uh, passed with the legislature in 24 that need continuation work, like the indigent defense, uh, the 911. Uh, it also talks about, you know, a thing that we've talked about in the past of the redistribution of alcohol tax dollars, uh, and redistribute those so they can be used more at the, at the county level for, uh, whether it's through the sheriff's office or jail or, or where it's at. But, uh, I think the brochure is pretty self-explanatory. It gives some, uh, very positive, uh, information relative to the county. And it's just, uh, good information for the legislators to have at hand or knowledge that they, uh, should have, uh, as they're talking about various things and local government committees, et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. Drews and Holly. I, I, I will say this is very well put together. At that, uh, you know, at our association meeting, what, how many new legislators are this year? Forty-four? Forty or forty-four, if I remember right?
Yeah, there's forty, there's, there's 33 totally new ones and then plus another seven that are switching bodies.
Okay. So yeah, the 33 number, I mean, is to help educate some of them about the counties. And I think this does a very good job.
And Mr. Chair, I just want to give a shout out to Cody, who's sitting in the AV room for us today. He's the one that actually designed it and put it together for me. So I want to give him a big thank you and thank you for recording for us today too.
Thank you, Cody.
Yeah. Thanks, Cody.
Thanks, Cody.
Any further discussion on this? See none for, I'd look for a motion to approve the 2025 legislative informational packet as presented and direct staff to mail the packet to the 20, 25 legislators.
I'd make that motion.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hear none? No in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next, next we come to items from chair or commission members. I have nothing. Does any other commissioner have anything? If not.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drew, uh, Ross Connect.
Uh, Travis and I did meet with the Humane Society Operations Manager, Jerry Steinle. And, uh, you know, we expressed our concerns and I think, uh, it was a constructive meeting. And, uh, I think you'll see more of this in an executive session. But, uh, yeah, just wanted to point that out that we did get, uh, our input put in with the, uh, former director of the Humane Society.
Thanks, Ron. And thank you for your perseverance of sticking through this commission after your, your, uh, stay. So we appreciate you hanging in there. Next we have committee reports. Mr. Laster.
All right. So planning commission, um, nothing of note, the ones that were here. We heard them today. Uh, building committee, let me get my notes for the building committee here. I wasn't in a lot of meetings this last two weeks.
It looks like it.
Um, so they were giving some updates on the cab at 900 concourse. Um, they expect, all the sheetrock to be done, uh, that Tuesday. So that was last week. Uh, there was a delay in the PDO building due to some door frames that they had to order in. Um, it seemed like it was kind of a hokey thing where they ordered door frames or had doors and didn't have the door frames or it was kind of weird. Um, but they were waiting for those. Um, there's a weather delay for the JSC drainage. They expect to do that in the spring. Um, to do, to do everything else seems security, they got the security grant. Uh, it's awarded. So for that courthouse, um, security grant for the doors. And then the highway shop roof and the jail kitchen regroup are completed. So that was out of that particular meeting. Let's see, Weeden Pass Board. There's nothing major there except, um, they're doing the South Rockville, uh, Rockerville road clearing, uh, for the shaded fuels break. They're expecting about $15,000 in timber sales out of that. Um, there's a Black Hills National Forest Plan revision, but there's nothing, uh, new on that one. It's just stagnant right now. And the new 2025 board meeting dates will be mailed to the county. And out of that, that's all that was kind of important there. Fire Service Board, I wasn't there that night. Central State's Fair Board, um, just, uh, they passed their budget last night and then it was the Christmas party. And then this morning, the Threat Management Group meeting. Um, basically they, we talked a little bit about, um, recall rosters and some other things that, um, probably shouldn't be discussed out here in the open. And then one of the other things that they were talking about is, um, a, um, a new interoperability system that the county is looking at or that they're going to discuss. So once that comes to fruition, I guess we'll, we'll hear more about that one.
Thank you, Travis. Mr. Drews.
So on, uh, December 6th, we had the Black Hills County District Meeting, uh, down in Oglala County. Uh, had heard some excellent reports, uh, including from Commissioner La Croix, reminding attendees of the upcoming Western Interstate Regional Meeting of the 16 states in Rapid City in May of 2025. Uh, Brian Brewer, Brewer, the superintendent at, uh, the Oglala Lakota Tech School, gave a presentation on the school, which is just located east of Pine Ridge. Uh, they're offering several different technical courses at, at the school. Uh, it's only in its fourth year, but it's overflowing with students. And it's a good looking campus. Uh, uh, we took a look at the campus too. 12/9, I attended the Rapid City Air Quality Board Meeting. Uh, there's only four days in 2024 where quality was really impacted primarily by the strong winds. Uh, a few complaints are coming in relative to uncovered loads, uh, primarily dirt and gravel. On December 10th, uh, did the, uh, annual meeting elevate. Paula Davidson of Monument Health turned over the chair gavel to incoming chairman, Tom Weaver of Dakota Bank. Uh, Cassia Elhie was honored this year for his contributions to the community through involvement in many organizations over the course of many years. Last year's recipient was Senator Michael Dietrich. Uh, on December 11th, uh, attended the South Dakota Association County Commissioners' Board Meeting. Uh, we had a, did a review of the legislation being proposed by Representative Tony Van Huisen and Senator Randy Dibert. Uh, this is the, um, proposal that would, uh, try to provide 35% uh, average property tax cut for homeowners. It would be paid for the increase in sales tax from 4.2% to 5%. Uh, how it works is that the owner occupied general education, special education levies of 2025 to be paid in 26 would be set at zero, uh, currently, uh, 2.679 mil levy for owner occupied general ed and 1.488 for special ed. Uh, this lowers the owner occupied property tax by $416.70 for every $100,000 of taxable value. So if you have a, if your taxable value is 300,000, it would save you $1,250. Uh, state sales tax would go up at, at the end of 2025, the same time that property tax relief occurs. A hundred percent of the tax relief would go to South Dakotans. Owner occupied properties must be owned by South Dakota residents living in their own homes. Uh, this means that out of state owners of, or vacation homes do not get the property tax cut. State sales tax is paid by everyone, including visitors to South Dakota. Uh, increase of, of 0.8% sales tax is three cents on a $4 loaf of bread. This plan has no effect on ag property or commercial property. Levy stays the same. School formula, school funding formula. It's dollars in, dollar out, uh, city and county funding. So it's a, uh, I, I consider that to be a, a starting place for dialogue at the legislative level. And I think there's a, quite a bit of muscle, uh, behind this in order to, to get that conversation started at that level. Uh, there are several others that are, uh, joining in on this effort and including Trish Ladner, who's had, uh, bills to try to provide some property tax relief previously. Uh, Tim Goodwin, uh, is also signed on to this. So, uh, I think the discussion is going to be there. And I think the, the taxpayers and the voters are expecting because of what they heard legislators saying during the course of this last campaign, that property tax was the number one issue that, uh, they're going to get that discussion at that level. So they need to be, uh, taxpayers and the voters need to be, uh, visiting with their legislators and, and, uh, explaining what their specific situation is. So the legislators are armed, uh, to the teeth with the information going into this discussion. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Drews. Ron, do you have anything?
Uh, Travis, Travis covered the, uh, building committee for the most part. Those, uh, door jams, that was specific to the, uh, Public Defender's Office and not 900 concourse. Uh, the Black Hills Association, the county commissioners, I, Gary and I were introduced to John Carley. He's going to be the new, uh, senator for district 29. And, uh, with that I did have some information that I pulled out of Dakota's survey relative to the, uh, plans that Tim Goodwin and Trish and Amber and Tony have, uh, that Gary kind of went in the detail. Other than that, uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ron. Deb?
Thank you. I did not make the, um, Christmas party last night. I forgot all about it in the RSV feed. I was making Christmas presents for the highway and the JSC. So, um, and then... I was making Christmas presents for the highway and the JSC, so, um, and then had a person I was visiting with. And he's like, you gotta go somewhere? And I'm like, nope. And then I didn't get done till about six-thirty. And then I didn't know, um, till later that I missed the Christmas party. So I apologize for that because I do like their Christmas parties. Um, we also was on the Care Campus Advisory Board. I had, uh, stomach problems that morning, actually, the night before.
They, they didn't have it.
Thank you, so I didn't miss it. Good. Cause I usually don't miss it because I enjoy the people there. They're very informational. And then the, um, Fire Service Board, we had our Christmas party. I usually make chili. And then Val does a lot of work and everything else. And her husband makes cinnamon rolls and stuff. That was pretty awesome. And then we gave away prizes, which, yeah, that's what I like doing anyway for making candy bouquets and stuff. So that was fun. But we also talked about a lot of training that's going to be going on moving forward in the future. So we also talked about the budget. And, uh, they are looking at doing an opting out this year, um, for twenty twenty-five. And I told them, uh, this is my personal opinion. I didn't say it was the board's opinion. I think it's a bad year to try to opt out, um, and try to get money when you have the school systems. New Underwood, you have, uh, Rapid City School System and, uh, jail bond coming. And now you're going to ask for opt-out. So, um, I would hope we would take that in consideration when the Fire Service Board comes up this year, that opting out. Um, a lot of people had suggestions on that, but it's not a good year to go ask. Um, I don't think it'd pass. And, um, I think there's more important issues, um, that the taxpayers need to be bonding for and stuff at this point. Um, we've always supported our, um, Fire Service Board. It's four hundred and fifty firemen. And they will try to find solutions in different areas. But I have a feeling we'll be having to help them again this year. I'm probably moving forward. So, um, just so we have that know that, um, that wasn't their idea. That was mine, um, from my opinion, just from, um, understanding, um, that that's a lot of asking of the taxpayers in one year. So, thank you.
Thanks. I got a long list of stuff here, but some of them weren't, didn't happen. Um, thanks, Gary, for, he did that Elevate's annual meeting. And then the Christmas mixer, I did make it for the Christmas mixer and stayed for about an hour or so. Uh, looked like it was very well attended. Uh, one of the things I did want to bring up at the South Dakota Association of, uh, or, no, excuse me, the Black Hills Area County Commissioner, the district meeting. Uh, one of the things Mr. Brewer brought up was, uh, daycare. And it really surprised me that he said they had problems with getting teachers on their reservation. And it was really tough. And what I neglected to ask Mr. Brewer was how, who's paying for it and how it was processed. But he said they started a daycare at the, at the schools for the employees and so forth. But that's, and he said that's what brought, how they were able to fulfill all their positions. That was one of the biggest things, we're getting people coming in to do that. So I probably will run into Mr. Brewer tonight or tomorrow morning for sure. And I can grab some of those details for you because I think, I'd like to know how they did that. Whether, uh, the funding is coming from the school itself and, and paying for the, the, uh, professionals to do that. How exactly are they, where does the money come from? Where they, how are they doing that? Because that's been a hot topic in our area for quite a while and quite frankly, across the country. So if they're doing something, I think that's working, uh, we could probably learn from it. So I will reach out to him. Um, Gary explained the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners meeting. Uh, that went well, some good team building there and some discussions with Randy Dibert on, uh, and them guys about this tax relief that they're talking about. But one of the other things we did during that board meeting, uh, is Mr. Drew is, since I am leaving, is the newly appointed WIR rep for the state. So he's, he's taken over. Um, that's pretty much explains that part. The WI Public Land Steering Committee meeting, uh, I did not catch that on my schedule. So, uh, did not attend that. Central States Fair Board, Travis covered that. I showed up for the party. And, uh, some other ones that I've had was, uh, the Crazy Horse Board Meeting on Development. So I've done, been going back and forth on that also. So that concludes my report. So next we'll go into executive session. I just want to explain a little bit how this is going out. On your agenda, it is listed, the discussions that we're going to be having, the Department Head Annual Review, DOE and Sheriff's Department stuff. So when we come out, those things could possibly be voted on. But for the sake of going in executive session, I would look to, uh, for a motion to go in executive session per STCL one dash twenty-five-two-one for personnel matters. And STCL one twenty-five dash two-three for proposed, proposed or pending litigation or contractual matters.
So move. Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Laster, Ms. Hagcock.
Just discussion. Um, so I get the Department Head Review. Um, I get the appraisal services because there's, um, litigation involved. But the part about, um, additional authority, uh, we have done that for the Highway Department. It doesn't need to go back in executive session. That was full discussion, um, about, um, moving that forward. In fact, uh, if I'm correct, Holly, and maybe I'm wrong, um, we had that discussion because of the Highway Department always having to keep coming, or even the departments in general having to keep coming for like twenty-five instead of, it was always like if it was thirty-four or something else, they had to come every time just to get it where they could move forward, getting salt and different stuff like that. So, um, I think that authority can be put up front, meaning we can, it doesn't have to go in executive session. We've done that before. Am I correct?
Mr. Chair, yes, you are correct. And that policy was included in the public packet for board discussion. Um, but you are also allowed to go back and discuss that as well.
Okay.
With the, um, appraisal contract as well.
Okay, because the appraisal was the appeal issue I got, but I didn't get that, um, why we had to go back for the additional authority, that we could have put it, just put it on the agenda today.
From my.
It is on the agenda.
Meaning the regular agenda.
From what my understanding is, there could be some other sensitive subjects that, uh, Equalization would like to talk to. I get what you're saying, Deb, about that.
Okay.
But I think he wants to explain why he wants to, because it's not something normal that the Highway Department has done. Because that's, that was one of the reasons why we did. So I think he's got some other information.
And that's why I asked the question, just in case I was missing something that had to be discussed. Because, um, it just says here it would be similar to additional authorities granted to the highway. So if there's different things that are discussed with that, that go, need to be contractual, I get it then. That's why I asked the question. Thank you.
So I did, I make motion, we did have a second from Mr. Laster. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're good. Ron, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay. Well, Travis just leave, but we can come out of executive, look for a motion to come out of executive session.
So move.
Moved by, uh, Drews, seconded by Hagcock. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. First item on our agenda is, uh, the preferred motion, uh, the Department of Equalization look for a motion to amend the purchase policy, contracts and leases dated June sixth, twenty twenty-three, and authorize the Director of Equalization to enter in, into contracts for professional appraisal services up to fifty thousand per contract.
I'll make that as a motion unless, unless you did.
I was, I was just reading it. Yeah, I'd make.
Make it as a motion.
Moved by Drews. And I'll second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
He opposed it.
Jan, he was opposed.
I am sorry.
He was opposed.
The only one in the audience.
At least put a Merry Christmas tune on there or something.
On January seventh, we meet, we expect lunch on you.
I thought it was doughnuts.
Oh, it's moved up.
Yeah. The world of inflation now.
Expectations from the Equalization Office.
Okay, second one we do have that was on our agenda, had to do with the Humane Society. Anybody want, I'll read it. Motion to approve the twenty twenty-five Humane Society Penton County Animal Shelter and Control Agreement in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand with the removal of section two of paragraph two regarding the additional increase in twenty twenty-six.
Second, or second?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Mr. Chair.
Seconded by Hagcock, Mr. Laster.
I believe there needs to be a correction to that. I believe it should be stated, removal of paragraph two from section two or remove out of section two, paragraph two. Because the way it's worded, it's, it seems like it's saying remove all of section two of paragraph two, which it's not, we're doing, we're removing section.
You know what my intent is.
I do know what your intent is. I just want to make sure that the.
You stated how you think it should be.
I think it should be with the removal of paragraph two from section two.
Yep, I'm okay with that.
There's a good amendment. I'll second it.
All right. Motioner and seconder, okay with that?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
So moving forward with this, um, I, I do think it would be very advisable for the county to have representation, uh, on the Humane Society. The group that they have put together, and I haven't seen who's on that group. But I do think that it would be, uh, very important for the Humane Society to have somebody from the county there also, as a liaison, uh, to report back as to what is happening. So we're not in this type of situation in the future where they're expecting us to be participating at a certain level. And we're not even aware of it until we see a contract come through. Uh, certainly this wasn't, I, I don't remember any of this during our budget sessions for discussion on this. So, um, can we do that, can we do that with the approving this motion and doing it with a cover letter?
With a friendly amendment.
He's amender.
Well, I made the motion and.
Travis amended it.
Yeah, but you seconded, right?
Want to amend.
And then I amended it.
Liaison.
But I just made clarification for the term.
And I was okay with clar, motion maker was me and I was okay with your.
Right. And I think Commissioner Drews is adding another amendment or recommending that we, do we put it in the motion to also have the commission liaison? Or is that something we just say, um, if what's this pass, wouldn't we send this forward to them, say we've affirmed it? Uh, expectation moving forward is a commissioner on the, as a liaison on the board. Is that kind of what you were getting at, Commissioner Drews?
Yes, it is.
I think we could send them a letter. I don't think we need to add it in there, but saying twenty, because you're going to read that, twenty twenty-six is in there. For twenty, you know, we want a seat at the table. And quite frankly, I don't think it has to be a commissioner. It could be a, somebody from the Sheriff's Department, too, because they're the ones that got the hands in also. That's just my, my two cents on that.
Great idea.
Yeah, if there wasn't taxpayer dollars, they need to have somebody at the table.
Yeah. So I think you're, you're on board, Gary. I think a letter needs to be joined with, uh, the contract stating that.
I, I'm okay with that.
Do you, are you guys okay with that without having to add it to the motion?
Yep.
That's correct.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is? I'm just kidding, we know what it is.
Wow.
So, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
One last thing before we adjourn. Just want to say thank you for the time on the commission. And one thing I forgot to say earlier today, I forgot to say thank you to my family because they had to put up with me being gone many, many days, many hours. And so, uh, I just didn't want to walk away from here without saying thank you to my family for, for them putting up with me serving in our community as well. So I wanted to say that as well.
Well, I'm going to follow up on that a little bit, too, because not only do I need to thank my wife for all her hard work, but I also, when you've got three different things going on in this, and still working, you have to rely a lot on the staff here and, and, and the county. And I really appreciate them taking up and being prepared for us and giving us the information when we need them to, to investigate, check it out and get us that information. When you're part-time, you really rely on that. I appreciate all they've done for us.
And Merry Christmas to the staff and our community.
Yep. Yep, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Move to adjourn.
Hold on, hold on, we forgot to recognize Jan.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah. Man, you didn't get not it.
It's better this morning.
This is paybacks. For being new, apparently.
Go ahead and come up, Jan, and introduce yourself so people know who you are in the county.
Could you please?
Thank you.
Yep, please.
Just tell us your name and your phone number, your address, where, what hobbies you like. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, Ms. Jan. Just your name, ma'am, and what your, your position is.
Oh, okay. My name is Jan Anderson, or Janelle Anderson. I go by Jan. And my position is a, um, Commission's Assistant Clerk slash clerk.
Welcome aboard, Jan.
Thank you so much.
I already enjoy your personality. Too bad I'm leaving, but I'll stop you.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Welcome, Jan.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome.
With that.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Hagcock to adjourn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.